All this city council meeting to order at this time, let's start with roll call.
Councilmember Parsons?
Here.
Mayor Adams?
Here.
Councilmember Banks?
Here.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Here.
Councilmember Cummings?
Here.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Here.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, thank you. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we have the approval of the agenda. I know there was a recommendation.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
There was a recommendation on possibly moving 6-1 past 7-3. I think what I'd like to do with that is actually have that conversation in that public hearing and then move the voting portion to after 7-3. So we'll have the public hearing as it's on our agenda, but when we actually go to vote, let's do it after we have the full discussion on 7-3.
For the easement on 6-1.
For the easement piece, yeah.
Okay.
And for those of you who are hoping to speak during that public hearing,
what I would like to do is move you from the 6-1 public hearing and we'll have that public hearing, well, not that public hearing because it's specific to the easement, but I'd like to have your input during the 7-3 because I think it's more applicable in that area than just the easement. If there's anybody who wants to specifically talk about the easement when we get to that public hearing, please raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm going to assume all these are going to be having comments during 7-3. Okay?
Can they have both? Can they speak to both?
If you're speaking at the public hearing for 6-1, it needs to be specific to the easement. Absolutely, you can speak at both.
But there may be members here who want to speak on both.
Sure, sure.
So feel free to come up and speak.
Does that make sense? Any questions on that? Raise your hand, I can try to rephrase it. All right, looks like everybody got that. So with that slight change on the agenda, we will, looking for a motion on that. Brendan?
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
All right, thank you. Second? Olga?
I'll second that.
All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposing, nay. Motion carries. So we do have a couple appearances today. First one is our sheriff, Sheriff Hutchinson. You're welcome to come to the podium and generally, we put you through a whole line of questioning before you get going.
Perfect. Used to it.
Actually, if there are any questions, we'll follow your, what you want to talk about. So you're welcome to take the floor. Thank you for coming.
And actually, Mr. Hubbard has offered to take all questions for me. I'll pay him 10 bucks afterwards.
Yeah, I bet.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor, for inviting me here. I'm city council and city staff. I really appreciate it. Crystal is obviously an important city. We've been to most of the cities even throughout COVID. The nice thing about COVID is we could do it remotely, so I wasn't running around all week. But it's nice to be in person and hopefully this Delta variant passes without too many issues. I want to thank the police chief. I think she's done a great job. We have a great partnership also. Deputy Chief Hubbard and I have known each other for a long time. Even my parents talk about how great he is and sometimes I get a little jealous because they know where I'm from long ago. But the nice thing is I am much better looking, so. And again, congrats to the new officer. It's going to be recognized here. I think now for people getting this profession, I have the utmost respect for because it has been a very difficult couple years. And for anybody who is committed to public safety that much, my hat's off to them. We have a great working relationship with Crystal. We don't have a ton of stats to talk about. I'll talk a little bit about them, but it's because of your great leadership to the chief. It's also because you have great cops. I mean, we forget how wonderful police officers are. You always hear the negative aspects. You know, 99.9% of us go out there and do the right things for the right reasons, to provide public safety to the people of Crystal, Hennepin County, et cetera. And we need to hold those people to, we hold them to a higher standard, but we also need to praise them when they do the right thing. And we hold them accountable when they do the wrong thing. If you tarnish the badge, you deserve to be fired. And if you break the log, you deserve to go to jail. That's a small number and it's really important that these officers in here realize that the work they do is the reason why we can have these meetings. We can walk down the street, we can go to a gas station, we can go out to dinners because of the work they do. So thank you. I really appreciate the work you do. As we all know, it's been a challenging year, year or two, the death of George Floyd, Brooklyn Center fiasco, and many, many other things where the sheriff's office has expanded our footprint. Again, we always work well with others, but we've taken a lot more, a larger role in policing Minneapolis and some of the suburban agencies as well. Of course, our crime lab, detectives, water patrol help out cities. You know, 36 cities with police departments in Hennepin County, there's 44 cities in Hennepin County. So it's not like we're short of work. So again, I always want to thank my staff. I have a couple of them here. Hydukovich is one of my sergeants. Jens is one of our, he works for intergovernmental relations. They make my job very, very easy. Or no, I shouldn't say easy, less hard. If that's proper English, hopefully it is. What we did in 2020, 21 in Crystal was we fulfilled 38 requests. Those have been a couple jail calls, subject workups, cellphone extractions, HIDA, which is the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Analytical Support. We've done a few things with Crystal's and North Hennepin Drug Task Force.
Sheriff, can I interrupt for a second?
Sure.
Talking to audio visual, there are people who can't hear in the chambers here wondering if we can have some adjustments there. All right, he'll work on that.
Pull the mic closer to your mouth.
Okay, I'll just.
Thank you.
There we go.
Thank you.
Hopefully I don't have any back problems after this. We've done, our Crystal PD of CSAR Criminal Information Sharing Analysis. We've done a lot of groups and large-scale home invasion ring that we helped solve throughout the county. Obviously, Crystal helped us with that. We had a robbery related to some gang activity. You know, a few other ones. I think these are pretty run-of-the-mill. But the fact is that they're low because, again, of the great leadership of you all plus your police department. Patrol stats, we've had 60 assists to Crystal PD. And that could be anything from our ESD stopping on a traffic stop with them or assisting anywhere necessary. So again, low numbers. And then I'm really excited about the new North Metro Training Facility. It's in Maple Grove. Thankfully, the county board approved the addition for our, I think we put $7 million into it, which is going to be one of the best training facilities in the state. It's going to have, you know, reality-based training, high-tech training, which is going to, you know, we're going to be able to change the video from different suspects of different ethnicities so we can pull out any implicit bias our officers have or deputies have and we can actually train that out of them. This is high-tech information, high-tech technology. And again, we're working well with our partners because, again, with the defund era and the lack of resources, cities and county agencies need to be prepared and work together to pool of resources. So it starts this fall building that Maple Grove. It's in addition to the current one. This is going to be great for all agencies in Hennepin County that participate in that. And again, this is going to be, hopefully you can all visit it. It is going to be pretty spectacular. It's going to have a larger range. Again, it's going to have de-escalation rooms. The rooms are going to be able to be interchangeable for different scenarios. So this is going to be, again, one of the most high-tech in the state. And opioid training. We've done a lot of opioid training virtually through 2020. We're doing some now in person. Again, that's with Narcan training. It's with our Detera bags that we have some out here. We'll get you some new ones. Those are the bags you put your medication in. You put some water. Just follow the instructions and then you can safely throw them away. And you can visit or email drugdisposal@hennepin.us if you want some of those Detera bags or for training. And one thing I'm very proud of, we started when I got elected, was the wellness units called Tri Wellness. This kind, you know, we're improving our gyms for physical well-being. We have an on-staff mental health professional. It's the first full-time mental health professional in the state of Minnesota and she's very, very busy. We're actually considering hiring a couple more. Because if our staff is happy and healthy and taken care of, they're going to do a better job of making sure they take care of our citizens. They'll be in better moods. Again, if you've dealt with a crabby cop, it's mostly because he or she's having a bad day. People forget that we have the same problems as everybody else does, but we go solve other people's problems for a living. And, you know, with PTSD, running rampant through this profession and public safety, we need to take care of our own. And I always say, again, it's maybe not best grammar, but if we break them, we fix them. So we put these officers through all this trauma and they see all this trauma. We have to make sure they're taken care of or else they're going to leave like Minneapolis cops are leaving in droves. Because, again, I think they didn't take care of their cops after the precinct burn. So I think it's really important. Mental health is the number one issue in this profession and we have to fix it and we will fix it. Violent crime, obviously, has taken a toll on Minneapolis, but unfortunately, it's coming out to the suburbs a little bit. As you know, last year in Minnesota was the highest homicide rate recorded in Minnesota history. So it's just not a city problem. It's not a suburb problem. It's a state problem. And the way we fix that is, again, what I like to say, police evolution. You know, some people say defund, some people say reimagine. I think the funding, talking about the funding, has shown its ugly face not only in Minneapolis, but every single large city in America that's even talked about it has seen a dramatic increase in violent crime because it emboldens criminals to do criminal activity. And so we are working with agencies, our Voda Fender Task Force are going after, you know, people shooting people, people robbing people, carjacking people. On the flip side of that, how we deal with it, what we've been doing, again, this is evolution, is we can't arrest our way out of the problem. People with mental illness don't belong in jail. They belong in facilities to make them better so they can be dreaming members of society. People suffering from opioid addiction, they commit crimes because they're addiction, not because they're bad people. So we have to get those people help so they're out of the judicial system, so they're out of the jails. So again, we can go after violent criminals and put them in jail where they belong. Again, I'm working with the state and I, you know, I hate throwing some of the state legislators under the bus, but we need to have better facilities for people suffering from mental health crisis and addiction crisis. These people are good people. We all know people who have suffered from both of them. We have people with, you know, autism that are sometimes, if our officers aren't trained well enough, treated poorly and brought to jail. And that's another thing we started with the stickers, with people with dementia, autism, and other mental health crisis. You can get stickers from our office. I think the best way is to, are we emailing? Just go to our website and email some. We'll send these stickers. If you're on social media, we're doing a lot of stuff on social media with it. And we're doing training, the state mandated training. I think we're going to take it one step farther. We're working with the Autism Society of Minnesota to make sure that we are trained, we see signs of people with it so we can treat them better. And also, we've done a lot of work with mental health. We have a social worker now in our dispatch center. So if someone calls 911 and says, you know, my significant other is suicidal, the social worker can help the dispatcher differentiate if police are needed, if medical is needed. And then retired chief of Wayzetta, Rizwald, is working for the sheriff's office now. And his job is to connect the suburban partners with the sheriff's office, with the county social workers so we can start a plan at Minneapolis and St. Paul and other cities that have done is people, you know, who do call 911, who necessarily don't need the police. Sometimes people that show up in uniform can exaggerate the situation. So at one point, we'll be able to send social workers with officers to make sure we can de-escalate the situation, make sure these people are taken care of. You know, we have so many different initiatives. I could talk all night, but I know there's probably some time crunch here. But again, I want to thank Crystal PD, the chief and deputy chief. And I think most importantly, the officers and most importantly, my deputies who go out there every single day, risk their lives for sometimes people who don't necessarily like us. But our partnerships with, you know, Mad Dads and Mothers Love, all this stuff, working with law enforcement, I think we can attack this violent crime trend and we can get people the services they need. Again, people suffering from mental health, addiction, they deserve our help. They don't deserve to be institutionalized. And I think together, we're going to get through this. It's probably going to be a rough next couple months, but I think with the pendulum swinging, hopefully that, again, we can support good cops and we can hold bad cops accountable. I will fire bad cops if I need to. But again, the good cops that are out here every single day need to be recognized. And the rest of the time I'm sheriff, in this election cycle, I'm going to say that repeatedly, that we're not perfect. We make mistakes. We're human beings. We have the same issues other humans beings have. But they've dedicated their lives to make things better. And for the rest of this time, I'm sheriff. I'm going to preach that until I can't preach it anymore. With that, I'll take some questions if you wish. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Sheriff. Questions from the council?
Well, just, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you for taking the time to comment, update us.
I love coming to these. It's great.
Thank you.
To see you all plus our constituents in person. And again, we're going through some stuff, but we'll make it. And I think we'll be better on the flip side of this, so.
Yeah, you know, for me, it's, our officers are number one here. And the harm that we put them in or expose them to, to the north, knowing that there were other agencies there to help back them up, yours and others, they were in the heat of it and you guys were too. And it's not lost on any of us, what it takes to, day after day, walk into that. So our respect is very high for what you've done for our officers, for our city and for our county. And I just, I want you to know that. You know, obviously, our first concern are our officers and you guys were there for them, so we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And again, we'll be here to help out anytime. I think just from that statement you made, I think the people that work for the city, especially the cops, hearing that from you, from leadership, is so important because, again, this is not a, it's a thankless job. It's a great job. I mean, second generation. My father was an officer and educator. Again, we're not perfect, but we're doing a pretty darn good job of trying to be better.
I agree. I agree. Brendan?
Well, yes, I think I can keenly speak to a lot of different things, but I want to say more specifically, address like that, what I appreciate as you being sheriff, taking initiatives, right? You know, we look at the, we start talking about the evolution of policing and, you know, providing services that, you know, and really policing the community the way they want to be policed, not saying, well, this is how we've always done it. And being on the forefront of things, you know. And as in my time, there's not as many, there's not many sheriffs or even departments in the whole country that are being on the cutting edge, being on the front of that. And so even though we are going through some hard times here and kind of being the epicenter of really the whole country with everything going on, especially here in Hennepin County, being on the cutting edge and on the forefront of that is also being looked at, you know, and talked to. And officers see that. The community also sees that. So I greatly, you know, appreciate that. The, in understanding the mission of the sheriff's office versus, you know, local police departments are also two different things. So, but being a leader of, you know, the county, but even the whole state. So thank you and much appreciated.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. And I think it is important that at the end of September, we're going to announce a really large initiative that's going to help our jail staff to reduce recidivism. We kind of stole it from the Flint, Michigan area. We're still working out details, but he's going to come out. The sheriff's going to come out, make a kind of a big to-do about it. We're going to have some special guest speaking. It's going to be educating our inmates when they're in the facility and when they're out of the facility. Because we don't, jails for people, you know, it's not a punishment necessarily. It's, we're supposed to make them better and we can make them better outside and they never return. They can get jobs and pay taxes and be in stable housing. That's what we're, public safety isn't just arresting bad guys. And public safety is making people safe, making people better. And luckily, I'm in a lot of associations, Major County Sheriffs of America. As an association, any sheriff that represents over a million people can be a part of it. And the initiatives, I mean, I'm sitting next to the LA County Sheriff, all these big county sheriffs with these really good ideas. And it's nice because I can steal them and make them, hopefully make them a little better and bring it back. So it's a great, partnership is great. I think what you've seen in, you know, some of the unrest and some of the tragedies here, that no city can do it by itself, no county can do it by itself. So we're in this together.
Nancy, go ahead.
Sheriff, I think I just had a thought too when you talk about recidivism and all of that. One of our former council members who retired, if she were here today, I'm going to channel her and just say, one of the frustrations she has, and I'm sure several citizens have, is that when arrests are made, there seems to be a revolving door with prosecutors not charging bail or just releasing them. So we get a lot of repeat and sometimes more aggressive and violent crimes as a result. Hopefully, and that's out of your purview, but I just wanted to put that out there, that that's part of that solution as well. And hopefully, they can do something on the state level.
Yeah, you're absolutely right. And that frustrates us more than anything. Again, I don't have a county attorney and judges. You know, we talk about, you know, police reform a lot. We forget about the judicial system reform. If there are judges letting people out that are violent people, I mean, we've seen people with three or four gun charges. They're felons in possession of firearms, which years ago would have put you in prison for a while. And now they get slapped on the wrist. We can divert our resources to low-level crimes. Those people can be diverted into different situations, but if you carry guns around and you shoot people and you violate people's, you know, rights and you, and they're just, they can't walk outside because they're too scared. Like when I was in the YMC in North Minneapolis, a large group of people. The only time we got yelled at was a woman who said, "Where are the cops?" She used a more colorful language than that. She says, "My daughter can't go in her front yard because she's scared of getting shot." I mean, when we talk about reform, let's talk about reform and the whole judicial system. Let's hold judges accountable. Let's hold our county attorney accountable. I'll take heat for the stuff I do. But again, I'm very vocal, especially in the last year. I've decided that I'm taking politics out of this profession. Sheriff is a political, you know, obviously I run for office, but I'm not letting politics dictate how we police. We're going to get bad guys. We're going to help good people. And we're going to make sure our citizens in this county feel safe so they can go in their front yards and play. That's really what our job is and that's what we're going to do for the rest of the time I'm here.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everybody. See y'all later.
Great evening. Next is our chief.
Our star of the show.
Chief Reverend.
The star of the show, that's right. Sheriff, did you hear that? Lauren, come on up. I have to tell this story for a quick second, so I'm sitting, I'm sitting over there by Fire Chief Larson. And oh, he did hear me. See, I was, did you hear me? I was being a little rude. Okay. I will apologize in person.
We were talking behind your back.
So I was sitting by the fire chief and all of a sudden a spider comes down. And I'm so glad I didn't scream like a little girl in front of you. So that's, it's a good thing. Okay. And since the sheriff is back because he heard me, I'm just going to thank him because he couldn't be more correct about the true partnership that we have with the sheriff's office and I truly appreciate him and his staff. So thank you. But we're here tonight to introduce you to Officer Lauren Roll, who as of today has shed the rookie title from her name and is being promoted from probationary to permanent police officer. As you know, candidates who are hired as Crystal Police Officers endure a rigorous process prior to being given the opportunity to wear a uniform. Candidates complete an application, go through two interview panels, participate in an interview with myself, the deputy chief, and the assistant city manager, conduct an extensive background investigation, a full psychological screening, a physical screening, and physical agility testing before offered a position. After they are hired, they complete two weeks of administrative and initial training, are given the oath of office by the mayor, and complete three months of individualized field training with an experienced officer. After successfully completing field training, they are approved for solo patrol and are assigned a shift for the remainder of their first year. Once they've successfully completed their probationary year, I approve them for permanent status, which is the benchmark we celebrate with Officer Roll here tonight. Officer Roll grew up in Champlin, Minnesota with her parents and graduated from Champlin Park High School. She says from an early age, she had a volleyball in her hands and credits her experiences in team sports with helping her build a solid foundation of leadership, communication, teamwork, and responding under pressure. Officer Roll says she decided she wanted to be a police officer because she wanted to be directly involved in having responsibility in keeping the community safe, keeping the peace, and building rapport, one interaction at a time. She says, quote, "I want to encourage people at some of their lowest moments. And being in law enforcement allows me to be a part of something bigger while still being an individual." Officer Roll obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Winona State University, studied for a semester in Spain, and is fluent in Spanish. She completed her law enforcement skills program at Hennepin Technical College in 2020. While going to school, Lauren completed a three-month internship with the Brooklyn Park Police Department and served as a reserve officer with the Winona Police Department. Officer Roll's references described her as an outgoing, motivated, eager to learn, driven, a leader, mature, able to stay calm under pressure, and a hard worker who always seems to want to do more to help out. These are all qualities we look for in officers that are going to join the Crystal team. And she has proven all these traits and so many more during her last year here. She turned down a police officer position with another suburban police department because she was so interested in coming to Crystal and we couldn't be more excited to have her here. Officer Roll currently lives in the Northwest Metro and in her free time enjoys volleyball, archery, traveling, writing letters, fishing, music, and spending time with family and friends. Please join us in officially congratulating Officer Lauren Roll for passing probation and getting on her own. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, Lauren. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right. Well, thank you for coming in.
You're very welcome. I hope another spider doesn't come get me.
I hope you can keep that scream in check.
I'd like to say, Chief, I was really glad you didn't mention what year she graduated from high school.
Right?
Yes, thank you.
That's right. All right, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. At this time, I'll read it into the record. Approval of the minutes for the following meetings, the work session from July 20th, 2021, and a council meeting from that same date, and then a city work session on August 5th. End of page turn. Approval of licenses, license applications submitted by the city clerk to the city council. That list is on file in her office. Approval of a resolution accepting the following donations. $20 from Elizabeth Beckdahl for the Barway Collins Memorial Statue. $25 from Lois Bellmore for the Barway Collins Memorial Statue. $10 from Janice and Mark Carroll for the Barway Collins Memorial. $2,000 from Crystal Prime Prevention Board for the community policing events. $1,000 from Crystal Lions Club for the Crystal Airport Open House. $57.53 from donation boxes for the Crystal Police Explorers. $50 from Linda Enberg for the Barway Collins Memorial. $250 from the VFW Post 7051 for Crystal Airport Open House. $25 from Denise Envai for Barway. $1,000 from Sherry and Gina Len for Barway. $25 from Kirk and Marcy McDonald for Barway. $20 from Mark McMillar for Barway. $20 from Rec Tech donors for Crystal Parks. $57 from Rec Tech donors for the scholarship program. $50 from Joseph and Shirley Purvis, I'm not sure, we'll go with Purvis, for Barway. $500 from Darren Quom family for Barway. $20 from Margaret Romero for Barway. $500 from Howard Root for Barway. $100 from Brenda Russ for Barway. $250 from Helen Schaefer for the tree planting at Bassett Creek Park. $200 from the Sisters of the Good Shepherd. $200 from the Sisters of the Good Shepherd for Barway. $25 from Marine Stolen, Stone, Stowen for Barway. $20 from Ku Way for the Crystal K-9 Unit. $4,000 from the West Metro Fire Rescue District Relief Association for Barway. And then next item is approval of the appointments, the appointment of Rachel Brayton for the Environmental Quality Commission. Approval of a resolution ordering the preparation and assessment role declaring the amounts to be assessed and setting the date for the public hearing for the 2021 delinquent accounts. Approval of a resolution accepting American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. That is our consent agenda. Looking for a motion on that. Go ahead, Nancy.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
Thanks, Brendan. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay.
I abstain.
Okay. Did you get that, Chrissy?
Thank you.
I'm going to abstain too.
Thank you.
All right. That's one of the longest consent agendas I've had for a very long time. All right. Next is open forum. This is an opportunity for the citizens to address the council. This is usually not agenda-driven. We allow three minutes per person, 10 minutes per topic to have a conversation. And that's what this time is for. Is there anybody here wishing to speak to the council? We do have one for open forum. Samyoghi.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Samyoghi.
G.
I'm one of the community leaders in the Liberian-American communities in Minnesota. And I'm here today with our executive director, Kamadi Diyan, and our secretary, Madame Brenne is here. And Barway's mom, Louise, is here. And the reason we're here today is we, maybe it was a day or two ago when we got the information that a statue of Barway Collins is about to be erected in one of the parks in Crystal. And that was to us a shock because we weren't informed, the community wasn't informed, and the parents of Barway weren't informed. So we would like to learn a little bit more about it before it's proceed. Our personal thing is a good thing, but the family needs to get involved.
So, my name is Kamadi Diyan. I am the executive director of the Organization of Liberians in Minnesota. We were very instrumental when this tragedy occurred to facilitate the travel of Louise to the United States. And as much as this gesture on the part of, well, like owning taking it, we appreciate it. But the, the only caveat there is that she as the mother was not aware of it. I am the community leader representing 46,000 Liberians, when I'm aware of that. I received a phone call from one of our committee members. And I was directed to one of your council member who told me about the whole situation. And I said, okay, well, there's several attempts have been made to contact us in the community. And I said, well, okay. And I give my phone number and my email address to whomever that needed to contact us. However, I did not receive any information or any contact from that person. We went ahead and contacted Barway's mother, and she also irritated that she was not informed. The gesture in itself is not bad. Who wouldn't want somebody to honor and memorialize the child? But what we look at, I've been a little bit invasive. Just imagine, maybe if you had a child that was in a situation such, and as much as somebody's trying to do good for that child, you were not informed, you were not aware. You know, you had someone memorializing you. I mean, with all of the good intent, it come across in a different way. I mean, we're not discouraging the effort, always saying that, why are we not part of it? I mean, we will bring down the entire Liberian community, you know, to ride it around that cause. We are hosting this Saturday, another Liberian will represent us in the Olympics, Joel Fumler. The committee is having an even is honor. We will have honored the person that's trying to do this, always saying, let us know, let us be part of the process, that's all it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, if I could just maybe perhaps answer a few of their questions.
Sure.
And then just discuss this very briefly. So first off, I just, Louise and I said hello in, in front when she first walked in. And we hugged one another because this is probably the first time I've seen hers for the last, I'm going to say, five years. So as you know, Louise was part of our investigation. She was crucial to the investigation. And I'm happy to see that she's still here. I actually, what she doesn't know is that I did attempt to reach out to her. Because I, as I told you, when the Kolb family came before you, I had said that I would like to reach out to Louise and to Yama. And the two phone numbers that we had for both, the phone number that I had for Louise was not in service any longer. And the phone number that I had for Yama, I left a voicemail, unsure if it's still her number or not. I have not heard back. So I apologize for that, Louise. I certainly, if I would have had your correct phone number, you know that I would have reached out to and let you know about this. Kamadi, I did leave you a voicemail last week. You may not have gotten it yet. I spoke to one of your, I believe, admin personnel that transferred me to a different phone number. So again, I just want to make sure we, we want, we wanted you to be a part of this process. We wanted to make sure that you knew about it. The Kolb family was, you know, the Jeff Kolb, as you may know, was on the city council during the time of Barway's murder. And it, it obviously affected him and his family a great deal. And this is why they wanted to do this tribute to him. So that's all I have. If any of them have any questions, I certainly can talk to them after the council meeting. Or you certainly can give me a call. And I will give you my cell phone, okay?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Well, I'm grateful that the connection is being made. So that's something that we sought after and I'm glad it's happening. All right. Was there any other issues that people wanted to discuss other than the public hearing or 7.3 on the agenda? Seeing nobody, we will go, we will skip by the rest of open forum, or we will close the open forum as it were. Next is our dispersments of $25,000 or greater. And we'll read that into the record. And again, this is unusually long. Health Partners for August Health Insurance Premiums, $127,121. Minpara for Employee City Required Contributions for Pay Date 7/23/21. $63,150. GMH Asphalt Corporations for Mill and Overlay Project, $588,702. Logis for the monthly application support and hosting, also for utility switches, $51,880. US Bank for Semiannual Bond Payments, $151,820. West Metro Fire Rescue District for July Contribution for West Metro Fire, $110,140. Center for Energy and Environment Home Improvement Loan Cost for $55,800. Crystal Least Housing Association for Kavanaugh Tiff Note Final Payment, 80, excuse me, $94,889. Golden Valley Joint Water Cost for July Water Costs, $321,330. Cross Anderson for the new public, or excuse me, the new police station building construction management, $52,168. Northland Recreation Bass Lake Park Picnic Shelter, $26,742. Odessa LLC for Bass Lake Park and Valley Place Park Concrete Work. VCI Environmental for Asbestos Removal Cost, $33,300, excuse me, $402. Hyperline Manhole Lining for Manhole Lining, $39,203. Insta Foam Technologies for Sanitary Sewer Lining at Hegemeister Park, $92,683. Logis for Monthly Application Support and Hosting and Utility Fibers. Utilities Fibers for $94,070. Ray Contracting Company for Utility Reconstruction Project AFP Number One, $496,231. Minpara for the Employee City Required Contribution for Pay Date 8/6/21, $65,480. Waste Management for HRG Recycling Cost for June, $143,350. Met Council Environmental Services for Waste Water Services for August, $33,499. Total dispersments of $25,000 or greater is 400, or excuse me, $2,738,830 and 83 cents. Council members, questions on any of these? Some of these are fairly routine. I don't see anything unusual either. Looking for a motion on this then. Go ahead, John.
Make a motion to approve the listed dispersments over $25,000.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, Therese. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries. I did skip by 6.1, didn't I? All right. We're going to go back and catch that right now. This is to receive comment and counsel consideration for a resolution to vacate the easement at 6613, 36th Avenue North. We have our city planner here, Dan Olson, to address the council. Welcome, Dan.
Yes, thank you. Welcome. May I just bring that up now? I do have one PowerPoint for both items, so I'll, I'll go through the first part for 6.1, item 6.1, and then I'll, I'll just stop.
Okay.
How you want to do it? So tonight's, at tonight's council meeting, there's two different action items related to this Crystal Flats subdivision at 6613, 36th Avenue. The first is item 6.1, which is an easement vacation. That does require a public hearing. And with an associated resolution, that would, we are asking for you to approve for the, to vacate the easement. And then after that, it's item 7.3 is the preliminary and final plat. But I'll just talk about the vacation at this point. Here is the location of the property where the easement vacation is proposed. The vacation hearing notice was published in the Sun Post as required. It was also posted in City Hall and on the city website. Here is, in the yellow, this is the area that is proposed to be vacated. The applicant for, for both of these, for this whole project is Mahmoud Abumah. I think I'm butchering it, but he'll, he can correct me. He is proposing to subdivide this particular lot for two new single-family homes. And I'll discuss that later on in the, in the process here. This easement that is proposed for vacation tonight was dedicated to the city in 1983. And it was for flood control and drainage. With the, with the new plat of the Crystal Flats plat, new drainage and utility easements would be dedicated on the plat itself. So therefore, this easement would no longer be needed. The new easements that will be on the plat will be more accurate than the 1983 easement. And that's why we're really asking for it to be vacated tonight. So, so there isn't an overlap of the two easements. As I do for all easement vacations, I notify the four utility companies. Three of the four have had no issues with the vacation at all. One did not respond to that, to the request after a couple of requests. So tonight, you're just being asked to hold the public hearing and then consider approval of a resolution vacating the easement. Just to note that if the, the approval of the, or the vacation is contingent upon the approval of the plat. So if the plat is not approved, then the vacation does not get approved. It doesn't go any further. So that's just for your information, but. I'm available for questions. The applicant is also here tonight too, if you would like to ask any questions about this particular aspect of the proposal.
All right. Questions from the council. Go ahead, John.
So this, this plat that I'm looking at right now, this, this is the improved plat for this particular lot, correct?
You mean this, this, this graphic here? This graphic is the, just shows the property basically in its outline. It doesn't really do much more than that. It does show, the purpose of it is to show the existing 1983 easement. That's the purpose of that particular graphic. It's not, it's not intended to show new lot configuration or anything like that. It's just to show the existing lot with this easement over it.
Go ahead.
And so my understanding was that there was a house on this property previously, right?
Correct.
And so then this lot was already platted as is, correct?
Yes, this was, this is a platted lot. I'll get into that a little bit later. But it's platted in 1926. So this has existed for almost 100 years, this, this lot. And the home was relocated outside, of course, this area, this, this highlighted area in this, this area where outside of the plat, the easement, so.
All right. Further questions? Any other questions from the council? Just to point a clarification, this is just removing the easement. It has nothing to do with the other easement that would take place if it were approved. And that other easement would be part of the, I guess, approval process that we already have set up tonight.
Right. There's, if I understand what you're saying, I understand it correctly. We, we are, new easements will be dedicated on the new plat. And those are just shown on the plat. And then when it gets recorded, they, they are locked into the plat. This was, when this lot was first platted in 1926, it had no easements. It wasn't until 1983 that there was an actual easement that the city obtained from the property owner at that time in order to, you know, for flood plane and flood plane and flood control and drainage. So that's what the purpose of it was for.
Okay. Very good. Nancy?
I'll withhold my comments later, but I did visit the area with neighbors over the weekend. And it is an extremely steep drop from that dotted line. It's a sheer drop down into the river area or creek area. And I know that it wasn't, the width of the lot, the size of the lot meant that, that Bassett Creek Watershed would not need to be involved with this, correct?
Right. They, they would not review this, they would not review this particular proposal because there is less than one acre being disturbed. That's how, that's kind of their cutoff. So that's why it didn't go to the watershed district for their review. A stormwater, I'll, I'll get into this later on too, if you like. But a stormwater management plan was submitted and reviewed by our city engineer, and it does meet our requirements. So that's, for this particular development, that's, that's the extent of, of the review that's needed. For a larger development, say maybe if they were, if they were disturbing over an acre or maybe 10 acres or something like that for a larger project, then it does go to watershed. And you, you've seen those in the past where we, where we, it's actually been a condition of approval. It has to be reviewed by the watersheds, huh?
Just one more question, if I could. If this easement were passed, would there be some type of retaining wall or something built in? Because I can imagine erosion or it's very dangerous. I mean, when you look down that fence from the back of the property, it's a, it's a sheer drop. And I didn't know if, if you're doing any type of flood control, if there would be any type of adjustments to the landscape.
Well, the, the typical things that we do there is erosion and sediment control measures are installed. And we do that for all of new, all the new homes. Those are installed the first thing before the ground is even touched. That's what's, what's done, just to really protect those, prevent erosion, so. The, the bank itself leading down, that will not be touched as well. This, the, the construction of this, of the homes would entirely be in the, the high area, I would call it, where the homes would be. So it's not going to be touching the bank of the, that leads down into the creek.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else relating to the easement? Okay. Thank you, Dan. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing for testimony on the easement specifically. Is there anyone wishing to comment specifically about the easement? Okay. Could you please step forward? Give us your name and address and I'll, we'll go from there.
Hey, thank you for letting me be here.
Yeah. Yeah.
Terry Barish. I'm at thirty-five forty-one Hampshire Avenue North. That's across the alley from, uh, from this property. My question around the easement is that although it was platted in eighty-three, there must have been some very good reason for that. I also see that three of the four companies have responded, but one hasn't responded. I didn't hear anybody from the city council ask anything about who that fourth entity was. Uh, and, uh, and if you're gonna wait for that response, depending on what the, you know, the nature of that is. I think the chief concern there is that, uh, that is a drainage area. And I know that over the years, there has been considerable investment in that little piece of land. The two tunnels underneath each of the, the roads. There is a tunnel underneath Thirty-Sixth Avenue North, and there's also one underneath Georgia. And any changes to that area, I think should probably be thoroughly investigated before, uh, you know, before you make a, a change to that. It's interesting because a Bassett Creek Watershed Committee has been pointing to the city and saying, "We're fine because the city is managing this." And then the city is saying, "Well, Bassett Creek's not getting involved, so we shouldn't be concerned." And I'm just concerned that that isn't necessarily, uh, connecting, so. My concerns, that's all I'm stating, so, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dan?
I could address a couple of those questions.
Yes, if you would, please.
The four utility companies that, they, they received all vacation notices whenever I, we do a vacation of an easement is Comcast, CenterPoint Energy, Excel Energy, and Century Link. The one that did not submit comments was Century Link. I, uh, I sent two requests to them. I gave them plenty of time to do it. So it, it does happen where they don't respond. Sometimes they're just so busy that they don't, this is, this is maybe, I don't wanna speak for them, but this could be small potatoes to them, and they don't, they don't have time to respond, so that's, they've had, but they have had plenty of time, probably a month, to respond, so. I just heard from Excel right after the packet went out, so that was just recently, I think it was yesterday, so. The other question about, uh, I, I wouldn't say that the city is not concerned. I think we, we have our, our processes in place. We require a stormwater management plan, which is a very, a pretty extensive document, detailing, detailing how stormwater management is gonna happen on the property. This is a fairly small project. It's just, it's basically just two homes, so it's not a, it's not like building a, a major corporate headquarters or anything like that, so there's, there's, there's scale there as far as what is required, but, the, the watershed districts have their cutoffs, and if, if something is, is less than an acre, they, they leave it up to the cities to administer those requirements, so. We do have requirements in place.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else wishing to speak on the easement specifically? Go ahead. Terry, were you still wishing to speak in the other portion?
Yes, please.
Alright, thank you.
Dave Beeson, uh, sixty-six oh-three Thirty-Sixth Avenue, on the property next door. I was just trying to understand the easement, uh, you said it doesn't, doesn't reach the bank, but based on the drawings I saw, it's, it's either at the crest of the bank, or it's, it's very, very close. It seemed like you were talking about the stormwater prevention during the construction phase, but what does that mean during the, the thirty, forty, fifty-year life? And as far as the integrity of, of the creek and, cause, you know, I think, I'm concerned, and others are concerned about the integrity of the creek and maintaining that, so. Does it crest, does the new property placement of the house crest that bank, or not?
Perhaps it might be helpful if I kind of go forward a little bit. So this is the easement that's gonna be vacated. And what, just for maybe the audience's education, an easement allows the city to store public stormwater. It's an area that the property owner has given us permission, so to speak. It's a legal document. It's recorded against the property. That's what happened in nineteen eighty-three. It gave us permission to store stormwater. Drainage and utility easement also allows us to, to, for us as a city, and also private utility companies, to have utility infrastructure located in the easement as well, so that gives, again, that gives the city and those utility companies permission to do that. Without that, we would be trespassing on, on private property, and we couldn't do that, so. It's very typical to get these easements. Every city does them. Every city in the country does this. So we, in, in this case, we, we, we're vacating this, but we're, what we're getting is, this is the final plat. So, um, these two boxes here are, are where the homes would be located. One, you see, in, in the dashed line? That's where the homes will be located within those boxes. Everything else around the boxes, in between the boxes, around the boxes, that is all a new drainage and utility easement. So the one that we're getting rid of, so to speak, we're vacating, is, 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 is smaller than the one that we're getting, and this is a, this is a better, better for the city, because we now will have the ability to, to have utilities and stormwater, drainage, I should say, located in, we're having, we're getting permission from the property owner to do this, so. So it's, it's a, it's a better deal for us, um, if this is approved. If that makes sense. So, so the, the easement vacation doesn't necessarily have to do with, um, how we're taking care of the, of the, of the creek channel. Uh, that's what, really what the stormwater management plan is, does. And there's, it's, it involves the, the two infiltration basins in each, there's two infiltration basins in, on each property that will help to serve as areas where the stormwater can go, it can be cleaned. We also have a lot of erosion control measures that will be installed to prevent erosion into the creek. So it'll, I think it'll be a better situation than it is now. So I, I think that's, that's what I, my understanding of the situation, so I hope that answers questions about this.
I think that's important to know. Yeah, I think that's good information. Thank you for bringing that forward. Therese?
I have a question for Dan. Um, if the developer goes forward and builds one building instead of two, would the easement still be at issue? The same, what you're talking about right now? Still need to be vacated?
Yes, we would. We would, if this is only one, well, if this was one lot, we, he wouldn't have gone, been going through the subdivision process, if it was only one home, I should say. And we, we, we wouldn't have vacated that nineteen eighty-three easement. We would've left it as is, because he wasn't going through the subdivision process, but since he's proposing to split it, we, uh, we get new, that we use as an opportunity to, uh, look at the easements that are on there and see, is this an adequate easement for what we, is it, you know, this is almost forty years old, so is it, is really meeting the purpose of what it's supposed to? So that's what we did in this case, is we looked at that and we said, "Well, we could have, we could get a better one, so let's do it while this, during this process." It's a very common thing to do when you're, uh, in a subdivision process. You look at the easements and you see what's there, and what, what, what to get rid of and what to keep, so to speak.
And if I could just, one more question, thank you, Mayor. Dan, can you show that slide that was just up, showing the proposed two-split development?
This one here?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the one that had, I think it was maybe up a couple, it showed where the, yes, thank you. Do you see in the upper right corner where it says fence, that dotted line? Is the fence that dotted line, or is it the X, you know, line, X line?
It's the line with the X's on it.
Okay, so it's fairly close, and if you look in that area where that X line, X line is, that's where that sheer drop is, right after that. I just wanted to kind of keep that in mind as we discuss the next item.
Alright, anyone else wishing to speak during this public hearing on easements? Council members are good? Alright. Uh, we are going to, uh, go ahead and have this vote after we have the conversation in seven-three. At this time, I'm going to, uh, kinda leave my script and kinda go off record, because we have some information or some comments that are, are relevant to what open forum, what was discussed during open forum, I believe. Jeff Coak, could you kind of fill me in on your request?
Sure. Sorry, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for being accommodating. I just wanted to make sure, uh, I wanted to give an update after the discussion in open forum. Thank you for letting me know, uh, that Louise was here. Uh, we were able to connect. Uh, we had a great conversation. We've got a meeting coming up, um, in the next couple of weeks here to discuss, uh, some of the details, so, as you know, I've, uh, we struggled to be able to find Louise and get in contact with her, and I'm, I'm ecstatic that, uh, she was able to be here tonight, so. We had a good conversation and, um, good, I'm glad to be able to, so thank you, Therese. I guess you were, um, able to facilitate that.
I was.
Thank you. Alright. Anything else? Okay, fantastic. Alright, get on with your meeting then, and I'll take my kids back to bed. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Alright. So we're, oh, yeah, interesting comment. Alright, at this time, we closed the public hearing. I forgot to close the public hearing, so we logistically have to do that for legal reasons, so. At this point, the hearing, public hearing is closed, and we will move on to the agenda. I've never had such a jumpy agenda. This is crazy. Second, I, second item on the regular agenda is, uh, considering new multiple animal licenses for eighty-four hundred Northern Drive, and our city clerk, Chrissy Sirius, is here to tell us about that.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Justin Tucker and Daniel Galloway have applied for a multiple animal license, and they have four dogs and one cat. Uh, the animal control officer has inspected the property, and his report was included in your packet. Notice of the proposed license, and tonight's meeting was mailed to neighboring properties, and staff has not received any comments in regards to the license. Staff is recommending approval of the license, and I believe the applicants are here tonight to speak to the council if they have questions.
Alright. Is that it?
Thank you. Yes, that concludes my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Chrissy? Alright, is there anyone wishing to, any neighbors wishing to comment? Nobody, no neighbors of the applicants here? Alright, if not, uh, is anyone interested in having dialogue with applicants?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Why don't you go for that?
I would like to make a motion to approve, uh, a new multiple animal license for eighty-four hundred Northern Drive.
Alright, go ahead.
Second that.
Alright, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Polls say nay. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
There may have been an agenda item that was not done, seven point, is it seven point one about dispersments over twenty-five thousand?
That was that real long thing?
Why did I miss that?
Cause I did it out of order.
Oh, I ran, I ran out of the room, that's right. Okay, sorry about that.
I did it out of order.
We are jumping around.
Thanks for highlighting that.
That's what happens when you leave.
That's great. Uh, next is seven-three. The city council will consider a resolution approving a subdivision plat to divide sixty-six thirteen Thirty-Sixth Avenue North into two lots, and our city planner is back with us, Dan Olson, to comment on that.
Yes, okay, I'm back for part two here. Again, here, here, the applicant is Mahmoud, uh, who affectionately goes by Mike, so we call him Mike a lot of times. He's proposing to split the lot for two new single-family homes. Um, the property has been vacant since twenty thirteen, when the previous home was demolished. The, uh, homes would be ax, the new homes would, would be accessed by the alley on the south side of the property due to the presence of Bassett Creek on the north side. So we didn't wanna have a driveway coming off of Thirty-Sixth through that creek area. That's why they're accessed from the alley. Uh, the new lots would be addressed as sixty-six oh-nine and sixty-six eleven Thirty-Sixth Avenue. Um, here is a graphic that shows in blue the property. And then the pink area is where we sent, uh, letters informing them of the public hearing for the planning commission. So that's within five hundred feet of the, of the property. Uh, we also did other things to publicize the meeting. We pub, we published it in the Sun Post newspaper. We published it on the city website. We posted a sign on the property. And we also posted it to four neighborhoods on the social media app next door. Um, here is the preliminary plat, um, of Crystal Flats. It shows here the, the two proposed homes. These are the, sort of the buildable area, I would call it, in this, in this dashed box. That's where the homes would be located within that building, building pad. And here is, of course, is the creek on the north part of the property. This is a, just a close-up of that same graphic. Um, shows the alley to the south here, with the two driveways, uh, the two homes here within the building pad, which is the dashed line. And then, a, as I said before, everything outside the dashed line would be a drainage and utility easement. This, uh, this graphic, or this slide goes through the different zoning requirements that we, we hold in our, in our Unified Development Code. Uh, first, we look at lot, the, these look at the site and see, does they meet minimum lot area width and depth requirements? Both of the lots are fifty-foot wide, which is the minimum lot size for the R-one district. I don't have this on the slide, but as a side note, one issue, one question that came up quite a bit at the planning commission was, if you look at the graphic, if you look at the plat, I should say, the lots are forty-nine point six feet in width, and that was a, a question that many people that attended had, had a question about. How would it explain that? So it, on the, uh, from the outlook, that looks like it doesn't meet the fifty-foot requirement, so. I did speak with a surveyor, and I asked him about that, and, uh, the situation is, the first, this lot was platted in nineteen twenty-six. The lot to the west was platted in nineteen sixty-three, so these are both pretty old plats. And planning process, surveying process have changed in that whole time. There was some, a little bit of overlap between those two plats, maybe took a couple of inches off of this lot. So it's not a perfect science when you're surveying something. Uh, that's where you get the forty-nine point six. However, we do have a provision in our Unified Development Code that allows us to round up to the, based on a half percentage point, so. If these lots were forty-nine point three, three feet in width, then it would round down to forty-nine, and then it would not meet the fifty-foot width. But in this case, since they're forty-nine point six, we are allowed to round up to fifty. So that's where that, that's, that's really where, where I can say that these lots meet the fifty-foot width requirement. It's a, it's an allowable exemption in our, built into our Unified Development Code that allows for that rounding up process. Both lots are two hundred and thirty feet deep, which definitely exceeds the one hundred-foot depth minimum. The minimum lot area in the R-one district is six thousand square feet. The lot to the east is eleven thousand eight hundred and one, and the lot to the west is eleven thousand seven ninety-seven, so they, they both are pretty much double what the, the minimum lot size is. The homes would meet the, the building setbacks for these is required in the R-one district, like, um, the, in the front, it's thirty feet, and then in the rear, it's thirty feet as well. On the sides, it's, uh, there is a, that, there is that five-foot wide easement on the side. And the, the minimum setback is five feet, but this particular, on this particular, um, home plan, they're nine feet, so they do exceed the side yard setback by four feet. Utilities, um, first, as far as water, um, there will be a new water main connection in the alley that will connect the water main in Georgia with the water main in Hampshire. It's going to be, it's, it's gonna be drilled underneath the, um, what's the word I'm looking for? I have it later on in the, in the, in the prop program, or the PowerPoint, but it's, uh, they're not gonna be actually drilling or tearing up the, the alley. They're gonna drill from both Hampshire and Georgia, and then sending it through the alley for the water connection, for the water main connection. Uh, as far as the sanitary sewer connection- As far as the sanitary sewer connection, what we wanted to do here was use the existing service that's, that was for the former home. It's still there. So, rather than creating a whole new sanitary sewer connection through the creek, we really wanted to try to protect that. So, we're going to, the applicant is going to install what's called a Y-connection. It's just like it sounds like. It goes from the main, and it kind of connects, and then it goes to the homes. So, each homeowner will be responsible for the service connection from their house to the combined service connection, where the Y sort of meets there at the neck. From that point, then both owners will be responsible for the part that goes from the Y to the actual main in the street. And staff recommends recording of a covenant that would be placed on both properties as a condition of approval. So, that would really spell out who maintains this, who's responsible if anything goes wrong. So, the city is not on the hook for it, and the two owners are not fighting over who's going to take care of it. It'll be spelled out in this recorded document about who's, how that, how any maintenance happens, or how any repairs will happen. So, that's, and that's, as I said here, it's not uncommon, it's to have that type of shared service. One example that I can give you is the 3900 block of Douglas Drive, which is just a half a block away or so. Just a few years ago, three, four years ago, shared water connections were installed there because there is a concrete water main in Douglas Drive that's very difficult to cut into, very difficult and very expensive. So, so there are shared water services for those, I think there's a dozen homes there, and, and some of them do share water services. So, it's not, it's not an unusual situation to have that shared utility.
Could you stand by, Dan?
Sure.
Go ahead, Brendan.
While I appreciate the, you know, kind of the, like water going in is a lot different than water going out. Do we have any examples of shared sewer connections? Because any of my own personal experience is a very negative one.
Okay. I don't have any specific examples of a shared sewer connection. I did speak with our Public Works Department, and they said that they believe that there are some out there. They don't, they didn't give me addresses, but...
So, may I answer that?
Sure.
I've had personal experience with shared connections going into the sewer.
Positive?
Haven't had, no problems. Yep. Yep.
Plus, we also have them for accessible dwellings, too, so...
Correct.
Yeah, any place that we would have that, would have a shared sewer connection.
Potentially, not required, but...
Not required, potentially, yeah.
Right, for a detached ADU, could, there could be a potential for that, yeah.
Not yet. Sorry. We'll get to it. Might want to write it down if you have something.
It, also, as I said before, the plat does provide for new drainage and utility easements for the proposed utilities, and any new, any new private utilities would be undergrounded.
So, can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
Because a lot of the focus is going to be about the alley. So, the alley won't be disturbed, is that what I heard you say?
That is correct.
Well, that's nice. Okay. I perceived that it was going to be different than that. Okay, great, thank you. Go on.
As far as drainage and erosion control, I've kind of said some of these things already, but the city engineer has reviewed the stormwater magic plan that was submitted with this plat request, and it does meet our, our city's requirements. Each lot will have two stormwater infiltration basins. People commonly call them rain gardens. So, there's going to be, there'll be one in the front yard, one in the backyard for each of these, and these will be maintained by the, the private property owner if these houses are built. And then, we all, we always require erosion controlled, controls during home construction. It's something that we keep up on a lot. So, landscaping, for single-family homes, we, the requirement, minimum requirement is that they plant one front yard tree. Because there is a new net lot created as part of the subdivision, there will be a $1,000 park dedication fee payable at the time of final plat. We have three subdivision criteria. First, if the subdivision complies with UDC, which is called, is the Unified Development Code, it's the zoning and subdivision regulations of the city. The subdivision also does comply with our 2040 Comprehensive Plan, which is the long-range plan for the city, which, which provides for how much density is allowed on a particular property. As I said in my report, this has about three units per gross acre, so it does meet the, the maximum is six, so it does meet that. And then, the physical characteristics of the site are conducive to the intended use. The characteristics of the site, we've determined are conducive to the construction of two new single-family homes. Both of these will be located at a sufficient distance from the, from the creek, on a, in an area of the property where a home used to be, and also where it's, it's much higher elevation, so it's very flat. So, it's, we've really, I've really determined that the physical characteristics of the site are conducive to the intended use of two new homes. Here is the graphic I showed before. It's the two final, it's the final plat. It's just intended to show the, kind of the buildable area and the easements. That's the purpose of it. Then I'll get into here some of the public, the planning commission action and the public input here. The commission held a public hearing on August 9th, and there was seven residents that spoke at that hearing. After the hearing was closed, the commission deliberated, deliberated, and they decided to recommend denial of the preliminary plat, with the findings of fact as being that the new homes will face the alley in contradiction to the UDC. So, before I get into the, this provision, I'd like to say that I think it was, we were a little, I think the planning commission and staff were a little cut, a little cut off guard, just by how much interest there would be in this. So, the, I don't know that the planning commission necessarily had a lot of time to deliberate as far, and really think through what the findings of fact should be. So, we had, we did have discussion about it, but this was, this was the one finding of fact that they were able to determine among all of them as being the one that they wanted to use to recommend denial. This was brought up by one of the persons who spoke at the, at the hearing. As I said, I had not been contacted prior to the hearing about any concerns, so I didn't necessarily have time at the meeting to try to look into this provision and see if it related to, how it related to the, to the request. So, this is the provision that was cited at the, at the hearing as a reason to deny, recommend denial, is that the, here, in, in highlight, it relates to alleys. And at first glance, it says, somebody would look at this and say that the, no home should be oriented to face the alley. However, this provision really, is really meant, intended for the establishment of new alleys. This is not, this is not a condition, or, these are not conditions under which existing alleys are, are regulated. These are for new alleys. That's what the whole, that whole section of the UDC is intended to, to regulate. So, I'll first say that the, the alley for this particular property, in, in front of this particular property, was established legally in 1926, when it was platted in the Gardendale Acres subdivision. So, here, here is an excerpt from that Gardendale Acres subdivision plat. It shows the lot here in question. This is Lot 5 that we're talking about. Here is the alley. It's, it was platted as a 16-foot right-of-way. So, it was platted then in '26, and then it was physically, we looked at a lot of aerial photos, and we saw it for the first time being shown on an aerial photo in 1937. So, we know it's been there since at least then, and if not before. And it's been continuously maintained as an alley since that, that time. So, therefore, the Crystal Plats, plat does not establish a new alley. Therefore, Section 5.25.05 of the UDC is not applicable in this situation, because a new alley is not being established. Therefore, those conditions would not apply to the, this existing alley. And therefore, the subdivision cannot be denied for that reason. Then I'll get into, there's, there was three main concerns that were expressed at the public hearing by the public. First is that the lot is too small for two single-family homes, and I, my response to that would be that the new lots do meet the city's minimum lot width, depth, and area, and in some cases, they do actually exceed other lots in the adjacent area as far as those requirements. In fact, a recent example is, and this, I believe this was in 2019, is that the city council approved a lot split of 100-foot wide lot at, on Carvalis, to split that into two 50-foot wide lots. It was a similar situation in many respects. It was an existing single-family home that was demolished, and then two new homes were built. The second concern that was brought up was that the dead-end alley would become too congested with this, with the addition of these two homes. So, my response to that is that, just, first of all, just to look at two other examples of dead-end alleys in Crystal, one has 11 garages accessing from it, and the other has 12, versus the six that would be on this one with these two additional homes. In addition, our UDC really talks about how to reduce congestion, and one of the main ways to do that is to require adequate off-street parking. So, for this particular property and these two homes, the minimum spaces are, that are required are two. This prop, these properties, both will each have four, two in the garage, and then two in the driveway. And there's also the ability to have what's, add what's called an auxiliary space, so that could have, that could, that's available to anybody in the city, that auxiliary space, and that could lead to having a fifth parking spot on each, each of the two lots. And then last, the construction of the homes will be too disruptive to the residents living off the alley. My response to this is that, first is, this is, kind of goes back to that water main question you had. The city is requiring the developer to install a new water main by directional bore instead of trenching. So, this is really what, if it was trenching, then the alley would be, would be ripped up, and that would be very disruptive to those homes that are trying to access the alley. But with directional boring, you just bore on the ends, and then you bore through, and create the, the water main that way. The other thing is, we do have a construction management process that the council adopted in 2016, and this requires two things. First, that adjacent owners receive an information packet with the builder's contact info and a description of how to respond to the various negative impacts that they might experience during the construction. And then, secondly, before the building permit is issued, staff meets with the builder, and we have them sign a construction management agreement, which, in which, in several different aspects of construction, they agree to how they're detailing, how they're going to interact with the neighbors. You know, it deals with trespassing and, and all sorts of different things that we would, we have, we go through that with the builder to make sure that they understand what our expectation is. So, for this item, there's also a resolution to approve the preliminary and final plat of Crystal Flats. I'm available for questions, and the applicant is also here, too.
All right. Thank you for that. That was a good presentation, pretty long, a lot of detail. Questions from the council for Dan at this time? Brendan?
When considering the, the space available on the, right in the lot, you're saying it was double, the depth, or, obviously, we're not taking into any consideration that all of that space isn't buildable because of, you know, because of the grade and the water creek. Doesn't that, in fact, change the actual space, right? Like, the actual buildable space, you know, usable space, is less than what we, what you discussed?
Sure. Yeah, that is, that is very true, that a lot of this, these lots are not buildable because of the creek and because of the steep grades in the back. I think, I might defer to the applicant for this, but I think, from what I understand, is that people's desires for what they want on a property are changing. Not everybody necessarily needs a huge yard anymore. Obviously, some people want that and look for that, but some people would be very, I think would be very eager, eager to have this sort of this open space in the back of their homes that would lead down to a, a very natural area that they can enjoy, and... So, they, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but...
No, actually, you kind of led into, it's not a normal space, right? When, I mean, you look at some different lots that you have, just some natural, you know, green space. I can't think of the properties that we had discussed on the, the EDA, but right, where it was, it was kind of, it was like, almost like a swampy area, you know, bunch of different, like, we were trying to look to see if we, you know, run that extension. You guys know what I'm talking about?
South side of town by lines.
Right. That's a little bit different, because it's a little bit more like flat, and, you know, so it just was at a lower elevation, whereas this has a very sharp decrease, right? It's not usable, and in fact, it's not something where, you know, I mean, yes, somebody could want to use that. What I'm saying is, when we're looking at, like, what the UDC defines as the depth of the lot, and I think that the intended purpose of that is usable space, correct or not?
Well, I don't think it's necessarily only for that purpose. I think it's, could be also used for open space. Every lot is kind of different. A lot of lots are different from each other, and some have a lot of the, the natural area that you're talking about, and some lots are, somebody might want to build a really massive home and fill up a lot of the lot, if it's a larger lot.
So, there's, there's a lot of houses south of that, where that creek runs through, and I'm guessing that it, it may occur kind of as what's being proposed in some of those existing. I don't, I don't know that that's a practice, where you subtract mass for, basically, is something that you, you, you just, you claim that is unusable, or you claim that is undesirable. I don't, I don't think we do that.
I was asking, I mean, I think this is a very unique situ, situation, right?
But I guess what I'm saying is, there's a unique going all the way down that creek.
Right, and as we continue to develop, I think that's a very important question to, you know, to consider when we're talking about the creek and...
Right, okay. Did you get your question answered? John?
We've looked at other homes that have unique lot situations, and I noticed that here you have the setback of being 30-foot from the alley. Have you looked at, you know, is it okay to maybe move the house closer to the alley in terms of having it positioned better on the lot itself?
Well, that would have required a variance to move it closer to the alley, and the applicant didn't pursue that. They, when we met early, went on with him, he, we told him these, those setbacks, and he just complied with them. He didn't ask to be, to have any of them reduced, or that particular one reduced, I should say.
Okay.
Here?
All right. Yep, go ahead, Nancy.
I was looking at one of the drawings here, this showing the alley, and it said a proposed hydrant with a six-inch gate valve. So, I had a question technically, if there's a hydrant put there, how would that affect the alley drainage if, if that's flushed out or maintained?
Hmm. I'm not sure that I necessarily know the answer to that question. I might defer that to the applicant, but I know that it was something that the Public Works Department did request, was the addition of a hydrant in the alley.
Mike, do you know?
I don't know.
Okay.
And then, yeah, the other question then would be access to the fire truck getting up to that, should there be a fire?
Right.
You know, because I know, delivery trucks, I've heard from the neighbors, that delivery trucks have an issue backing up into that. So, I'm just a little concerned in asking about access.
Sure.
And the maintenance, and how that drainage or flushing might affect that alley.
Sure.
Do you have that drawing?
Is it this one here, maybe?
It's not labeled. Lot 5, Lot 2...
It's the utility plan?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I didn't...
Sanitary rain garden, the one that has rain garden on the backside, and...
Okay.
And then it shows the alley, and then the drawing is Legend A with a circle around it.
Does everybody have the same trash service? I mean, I mean, right? Y'all go with the same, same company?
Yeah.
See if I can show this, if you like.
Yeah.
It's sheet number C2 of C2, if that helps.
Yeah.
In the bottom right corner.
Yes. I don't think you can show it.
Do you want me to bring it up, Dan?
Oh, I have it.
Okay.
I just, I'm not sure how to show it on this.
Oh, I see.
Change the presentation.
Because it's, because it's through Zoom, I guess.
Yep.
Sorry about that. But I, maybe to address one question you had, as far as fire access, for all land-use development review applications, we run those by the fire department, and they were okay with this, the ability to access these, this home and other homes for fire access.
Thank you.
It's right, it's right down here in the bottom corner.
There it is.
I think that they, I would, I don't know if the West Metro wants to speak on this, but my experience has been that, again, when there's a subdivision or something like this, the city will, if appropriate, they'll try to get things like hydrants, because if there's no hydrants back here, I don't know if there is or not, but they will use this process to get a hydrant. So that would probably be my, my take on what happened, or why the city's requiring it.
And I don't know where the current one is, for the neighbors up, up there, but, okay.
All right. Other questions also?
About the alley and the facing, which way was the facade of the original home, how it was oriented?
I don't exactly know, but I've been told that it, the garage, there is, there is part of the garage, I'm sorry, driveway pavement still existing there, so the garage was definitely accessed from the alley. I've been told that there was a front door on the north side of the home, but I haven't seen pictures of the home that was there, so...
Yep.
I believe it faced the 36th Avenue, correct? Al? Yeah, okay.
Yep.
So just like a typical St. Paul home, I think it's, you know, aiming through the back door. There you go.
All right. Is that, you guys good? Any questions for Mike before we get rolling here? None? Okay. Thank you, Dan. At this time, we're going to, I guess, what would feel more like a public hearing, but technically it's not, we're just going to take comment from anybody who wanted to speak, and I'm just going to go from the top of the list if that is good. I got Gary Blazek. Blazek? Can you come up, please state your name, give us your address, and...
Go ahead, microphone, please.
Yeah, make sure that microphone is facing you.
Yep. Gary Blazek, I live at 3516 Georgia, and I, I know this property, the alley that we're speaking of, and the way it looks is the, you can't hardly get three or four cars, I mean, it's a one-way, it's so tight, and to your point, with the houses that you'll see from 36, you'll see two box houses, and the rest of it's, like you say, it's a, there's not, there's no flat land, it's a gully, it's a creek. So from 36, it's, it's just too tight for two houses. One, maybe, two, not, not, I'm just against it, as a neighbor. 3516 Georgia, I don't live far from there, so...
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Yep.
Terry Berish? Surprised you weren't on top.
Thank you.
I'm surprised you weren't on top.
Again, right? Good. A little out of order here. First of all, with the sheriff being here in that speech, I just want to say thank you, and thank you for this past year and a half, two years. Honestly, the, thank you for your service, and thanks for your whole team, honestly. Also, Mike, regardless of the outcome, we want to meet with you and hang out. Likewise. Please, I'll just make that happen. I'm so sorry, this kind of happened to us suddenly. We didn't have a chance to really reach out, and, but we, we want to. Fantastic, good, see? And also, Dan, I want you on my team, incredible salesman. I believe everything you said, you answered all my questions, and, you know, you're great.
So Terry, you changed your mind?
We have, we do have some, we do have, I'm just saying he was a great salesman.
Three, no, you're three minutes here, just...
Three minutes, right, great, good. Snow. Well, we live in Minnesota, I know there's global warming, we have snow. I haven't heard any discussions around where all that's going to go. We have issues with snow, and just in our driveway, where we put it, and so, you know, address that. The sewer thing, you may have had, and I hope you knocked on wood when you said you've had no problems. Seriously, I would, that seems very concerning to me. And the traffic, no matter how, I mean, get five cars in there, now we've just added ten cars to that spot, so it's solving one problem, but it is creating quite a different one. I'm opposed to having two houses there, let me be clear. I think one beautiful, single-family home would fit very appropriately, and it would fit the neighborhood, and all of that. In terms of guessing if there's other properties that match, Dan doesn't guess, he's got facts, so let's look for the facts, okay? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. Yep, that's, that's why he's got his job. Let's see, Dave, is it Besu?
Beeson?
Beeson? Oh, it's an N, I'm sorry, I thought it was a U.
Again, Dave Beeson, 6603 36th Avenue North, property to the east and adjacent. Obviously, I'm opposed to this lot split for a number of reasons, as some of the council members already said, this is just unique, it's tight, you got the creek involved, what I saw on the proposed building pad, that's well past where the bank is now, so what's steep now is only going to be steeper, you know, it just, it just has to be. People have talked about the traffic. To me, it also changes the character of the, of the neighborhood, you know, you're shoehorning two, two narrow homes into one. If I understood right, easement, basically, there's no room for develop, for the new owners to enhance or improve their property, because basically, they're sitting on easement all around with the rain garden and so forth. So, I mean, that's, that's one of the, one of the, I understand, Crystal wants homeowners to improve and enhance their property for the beautification of the city, and I'm all for that, we've done that on our place. Related to that, it was, you know, we talked about the auxiliary parking, I mean, I just don't see how the idea of an auxiliary parking, there's no place to put it, you got a rain garden next to a driveway, next to an easement, so, so, you know, I think it just doesn't fit, it's unique. I do have some counters to what the latest council staff report, and I'd just like to go over those, because I disagree with some points in there that don't make sense to me, regarding the provision of the alley not to face, or the home not to face the alley. The alley is established for that, and it would only make sense, and that, that stands for forever, that perpetuity. You don't, you don't make an alley and then unmake an alley, it is an alley. So if the rules apply when you make it, they apply forever. Let's see. It was mentioned about comparing this alley to the other alleys between 42nd and 43rd. Again, there's some uniqueness here that's not there. All those, those other two alleys are served with frontages by, I think it's Zane and Welcome, or, but anyway, they all have frontages to take deliveries, to take guests, et cetera, so this, these two properties would not have that, so it's not a good comparison in my mind.
You're at three minutes, one more quick comment, please.
One more quick comment. Okay, the rounding, let's talk about the rounding. The rounding doesn't apply for a lot measurement. Rounding apply, if you look at the provision, how the statute, or the UDC reads, rounding applies when you're doing a fraction or a percentage, which is subdivision one, then you go to subdivision two, that defines distance measurements. So there is no round, I don't see any provisions in the UDC for rounding of a distance. You round a fraction, you can say it's a, whatever you get around, I don't know, but rounding doesn't apply to a distance measurement. Lot width is defined as distant, horizontal distance between two lot lines, it is what it is. So this particular lot is short of fifty feet.
All right.
Thank you for your time, I'll take any questions. But I guess my time's up, so, it's like the golden show.
Do you agree with Terry?
Pardon me?
No, I was gonna say, do you agree with Terry?
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
Kathy, Kathy Beeson?
Thank you for taking the time to listen to all of us. My name is Kathy Beeson, I live at 6603 36th Avenue, married to David, agree with everything he said, agree with what the other people have said. My only other comment in regard to these deliveries, currently, the four of us that use the alley, we get our deliveries off of Georgia in Hampshire. It's rare that delivery trucks are required to come down, because they're usually coming off the streets. There's been occasional delivery trucks that I've had, when I've had bigger pieces of furniture, that they didn't want to hoof it up the steps, you know, up the hill from Georgia. They do have difficulty navigating. I'm amazed, watching garbage trucks, they can somehow make it down there, I don't know how, but deliveries to these two properties would have to be in the alley. It's going to be too far for the delivery trucks to be parking on Hampshire and hoofing it up the alley, so I am concerned about the safety of that many delivery trucks. We live in a day and age when we're all getting a lot of deliveries at our houses, and I do have that safety concern. Thank you for your time this evening.
Yep, thank you, Kathy. Al Franz?
I will use my time to Dave over here. Dave, Dave's not here.
Sounds like an old spin. Dave's not here.
Okay, I'm, I'm here, I know that.
That's great.
I have lived at 3550 Hampshire for sixty years now, sixty-one, and I'm kind of concerned about two houses being built there. I know the end of my house, there is footings below there, eight feet below the basement floor, and then I built a deck, and I had to get a permit for that, and the, the end of my deck, the, the footings are down ten feet, and I was down in a hole pulling cement out of there. So I'm concerned about a building that's going to come into easements of, of the cities, and I, I would like very much that they would be a single house put in there, but I'm, I'm concerned about the congestion and going into the easement, and so my feelings are that, that I think there was, I knew the people that lived there before for many years, and the one home worked out great for them, but I think was some of the problems. Another thing is that I, I understand that the electric might be going underground, is that a possibility? And I, I would hate to see my light pole go, because I have a light on it, and it lights up my backyard, and there have, I remember one time, the police were chasing someone through my backyard, and I guess they finally caught the guy, but I would, I would like to keep that light there, too. So I'm, I'm very much in favor of a home being there, but I think, too, is just, makes it too tight. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Al. Just a couple of clarifications, the house is not going into the easement, the house itself will not go into the easement, that's one. And as far as electric work done on, in your yard, am I correct, Dan, in saying that the only electric work is going to be done in this lot?
Right. Any, any new, like, there wouldn't be any new overhead on this particular lot, and it only applies to this lot. I, I don't even know if they, if they would need to do overhead, but if they, if they, if they wanted to do any sort of, you told me...
So Al's light will not be affected, is what I'm understanding?
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay, awesome. Michelle Strand? Hey, Michelle.
Who are you? Michelle Strand, 3430 Douglas Drive, North Crystal, I have no skin in the game. I'm the planning commissioner that moved to deny the subdivision, and I wanted to come here tonight to give you my thought process on why I thought that, because sometimes things get missing, or get lost in translation. Dan's right, that night, when I pulled up and I saw everyone in the parking lot, like, this is something more to this division than just a straight division, and then I read it again and realized, it doesn't make sense. And when I went for moving for denial, doesn't make sense is not a proper finding of fact, so we had to come up with something, and we came up with the 52505, talking about the alley and the house facing the alley. Actually, the gentleman in the audience is the one who tells, because I don't have the code memorized, I know you find that hard to believe, but I don't have it memorized. When I read Dan's response to the denying the denial, I thought, this is silly, and this is kind of our topic, but the point of, you know, if we, if we make a new alley, the house can't face the alley. If we have an existing alley, the house can face the alley. That's silly, right? I mean, if the point of the thing is you don't want the house facing the alley, this is a new structure, this isn't an existing home that we're improving, this is a brand-new structure we want to put up. So it's saying, like, if you have a house, you can have a red roof and a, you can't have a red roof and a green house, but if you're building one, you can have a red house in it, but if you have an existing house, you can, you know what I'm saying? Bad analogy, but anyway, didn't work.
Absolutely.
Getting back to the subdivision criteria, the proposed subdivision must be in compliance of the UDC, number one. I would argue that the size of the lots are not fitting the fifty-foot minimum. I know the rounding rules and everything else, and the lot, the, the surveyor came up and was very specific at forty-nine point six, that's a very specific number, but out at the lot, the property marker is a nail that is pounded into the utility pole, on the west side of the pole. Now, if that marker was on the east side of the pole, is it now forty-nine point two? And then we would not be rounding it up to fifty. Am I making sense? I don't know the proper way to survey a, a piece of land and where you put the property markers, but I don't think pounding a ten-penny nail into a utility pole is proper or best practice. I could be wrong, but I, so I question the actual size of the lot. I know on the plot, it says a hundred feet, but he was very, this is very specific, he didn't say fifty feet, he said forty-nine point six feet, with no pin, so that, I question that. The, the part number two, the density, I agree with that. Number three, the physical characteristics of the site, I do not think that having two homes dividing this into two is conducive to having, to this neighborhood. There's a definite slope coming from the, the house up top, empty lot house down here, there is a slope, okay? There's some land there now that's going to absorb that water, putting in a couple of rain gardens, I don't think is going to solve the problem. I feel for the person at the end of the lot, she might get some water runoff, maybe not, I'm not a water engineer either, I'm just saying, common sense-wise, this does not make sense. Single-family home, single lot, makes sense. Single-family home, single lot, makes sense. The lot is much, much more narrow than the other lots in the area. And I know Councilmember Banks, I don't know how you, I was gonna say Brendan, but. You know, brought up, you know, the, the back half of that property is useless. I live on Bassett Creek on Douglas. Back half of my property is useless. I have almost an acre lot. I can't use the back half of my property. I personally love it. But this, to, to calculate the, the percentage of the usable space, you're gonna have a lot like, you're gonna have a backyard like this. You're gonna have a four-bedroom house with three and a half baths. Who's gonna be in that house? Kids? Where are they gonna play? They're gonna fall down the creek, because Nancy's exactly right. That fence, right out, you open that fence, and you are down the cliff. So, I mean, is, is that our responsibility? Probably not, but as a human, you should care about the kids. If the kids aren't in there, then you're gonna have four adults, which means you have cars. And Dan brought up, you have five cars now. So now you have 10 additional cars going up and down that one-way alley. This is where UPS is gonna come. This is where the Girl Scouts are gonna come. This is where the ambulance is gonna have to come. It doesn't make sense. One more thing, which we didn't talk about in the report. The condition, the findings of fact for the certificate of occupancy, B was to install and maintain a directional sign along 36th Avenue, telling them, telling people, you have to go around the corner and up the alley to get to our house. Now, the Domino's guy can't find my house on Douglas. How is he gonna find going up an alley and then trying to find it there? Same thing with the ambulance. Are they gonna know? Because the address is 36th Avenue. But they're gonna be looking for a little sign that says, well, I gotta go in the backyard. I gotta go around the alley. And in the meantime, there'll be 10 cars there, because you're having a party. So in conclusion, unique property, planning is not as direct science, we know that. But we should not compound this unique property. We should leave it as a single lot for a single-family home. It's just not the right place to split, considering the alley requirements, the creek covering the majority of the property, and no access to the north side of the property. No, I mean, there's a sidewalk there, but God forbid, you can't walk through that alley. So just because we can, doesn't mean we should. And so I would encourage you to not divide this property and leave it as a single family.
All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
So just a note to Terry, I'm no longer guessing.
All right.
Lorraine Franks?
Hi, I'm gonna read this. My name is Lorraine Franks. I reside at 3540 Hampshire Avenue North, to the west of the property in question. My main concern is water drainage into my property from the development. I would like to know if there is a, a plan in place to mitigate this issue. If so, I would like to be informed, to set, onset plans out because I'm very concerned about the water rushing into my backyard. I'm the lowest property on the alley. And if the city can fix that, but I don't think it's the city's responsibility. I think it's the builders. And another thing about water, that sewer that they want to connect and have a responsibility for the owners of the property, how old is that existing sewer? Because that house was built in 1934, and it was demolished in 2013. And I was there in 2013, and, and I don't know if that sewer works, you know? So if they flush something down there, who's going to, you know, dig that up and put a new one in? You know, and who's gonna be responsible for paying, paying for that?
Mike will be.
Okay. And we'd, we'd like to meet Mike. We haven't.
Okay.
I've never met him. I've talked to him on the phone, but I, I don't know who he is. And I would be happy to have the whole neighborhood talk to him, and maybe we can work something out. But, you know, it, you know, this is a community, and we have to keep it a community, you know? Even if they're gonna build something, we have to know what's going on, you know? It's, it's important to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Mike Dupuis?
Mike is good.
Mike? You can correct me. It's okay.
It's Mike Dupuis.
Dupuis?
3529 Georgia Avenue North. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you so much for having us today. Thank you for all of you who spoke with me on the phone and came out to the property. It was really nice to see you all. I'd like to address the topic for the last time, I promise. 525.05 subdivision 10. H. Mr. Olson argues today that, that this law does not apply because the operative word in the sentence here is "establish." I would argue that "establish" is one important word, but it's not the most important. Condition three is stated, "No home shall be oriented to face the alley." It is not stated, "No home is oriented to face the alley." "Is" is the present tense. "Shall be" is the future tense. By Mr. Olson's logic, the city could stop maintaining the alleyway or resurface the alleyway using asphalt. But that's never happened. In fact, Mr. Olson stated that all, that the city has maintained it continuously. I would also direct you, if you don't believe me, to Section 505 subdivision 21. This is the definition of the primary building facade. Building facade "primary" means the building facade facing a street, and goes on to discuss corner lots. A street is not an alley. This is stated many times throughout the UDC. I can pull up the definition of a street and the definition of an alley. I would also argue that Mr. Olson pulled up several examples of other unique properties, properties with shared utilities, other dead-end alleys. He did not pull up any examples of homes on alleys facing the alley. So it seems that this would be a complete 180, pun intended. So the last thing I'd like to add is that, as a community, we are not opposed to development. We're opposed to this development. We're opposed to development for development's sake. What we're interested in is a home that fits within our community and within the other homes that have been developed here. So with that, I'll thank you for your time. I'd like to respond to any questions you may have.
I have a quick one, if I could.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike, your home is on the top end of the alley, right?
Yes, it is.
Just so people can visualize where your home is, and.
It is across the alley and east of the property being developed. Southeast.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mike. All right. That concludes all the requests for speaking that I have. Yes. No, I didn't go through it twice. Just for your benefit, Brendan. I'm just gonna make sure I don't step in it again. I've moved things around too many times tonight. We're good. All right. Mike? Would you be, are you interested in speaking at all?
Sure.
Step forward and... I'll let you just kinda have the time like they had.
Mahmoud Abu Mayali. I'm not just the applicant, I'm also the licensed contractor and developer. So I won't just be applying for this subdivision and application. I will also be present at the construction site throughout the construction process. And I'm more than willing to accommodate residents and neighbors for whatever issues and concerns that may come up through the construction process. And one neighbor mentioned about having a, a neighborhood meeting. I'd be more than willing for that also.
So I, you know, the one thing that, that, Lorraine's comment, she's on the, the low side of your property.
Okay.
You know, as far as all the construction that's going to happen, I'm not worried about the creek. There's nothing going to be touched there. What, what I'm perceiving, and again, I'm perceiving a structure that's gonna be closer to the lot line than, than before. And that, that could be a difference in the neighborhood experience. Not saying that it's not meeting requirements, because it is, and it's actually exceeding requirements. That being said, we do have a unique thing here, a, a unique topography. And water's a big deal, you know, on the low side. So I don't know if you have any, any remedies or mediation plans in place already or what that might look like in the future. Have you had any thoughts on that?
In my past experiences, and I know this is a unique situation, we haven't had that issue. So I think we can come up with a preventive plan if we have to. We actually spoke on the phone today, and she had some questions that I answered for her. And we do have a sewage and, um, plan from the surveying that was already addressed. I don't think that there would be any issues in addressing those if they come up, if there's a preventive way with Dan that he'd like me to approach. I'm more than open to.
Let me ask you a couple more questions. Are you putting gutters on?
Yes.
Okay. And the topography, if I'm not mistaken, when I'm looking at it, it doesn't take long to get past that house. So it would be downhill away from basement?
Yes.
On the downspout?
Yes.
Okay. And that's where your rain gardens are?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I.
And I know when I talked to Lorraine today, she said a lot of the neighbors were expecting these to be rentals. I just want to clarify for the record, they're not going to be rentals, they're gonna be.
I, I don't care if they're rentals or not, because we don't, we don't judge building.
I know.
Who's occupying or.
Right.
Who owns it. I mean, that, that's something that just.
But that was just something I wanted to address the, the neighbors.
Yeah, I got, I got sense of that in one of the letters, and.
Yeah.
That, that's not right.
Okay.
So I don't even want to hear it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Go ahead, Nancy.
Hi, Mike. Do you have plans to widen this alley?
No.
I was just curious, because I thought I read or saw something somewhere that there may be alterations or.
No.
Something for drainage, but it would stay at 12.
There is a drainage plan. We do have a drainage and sewer plan, but, no. No plans to widen the alley. We feel like there's not a, no necessity for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, you know, just discussing the alley real quick. We have garbage trucks that get in there. We have a fire. Fire hasn't said that that's a problem. Plus, we're not touching the alley, correct?
That is correct. We are doing the water from underneath.
Right.
That is one of the requirements.
There's no modifications to the alley whatsoever.
Okay. I know there are a couple, some oak trees, very old oak trees, at the base with low-hanging branches. So some delivery trucks have had some issues kinda navigating under there. Maybe it depends on the height of the truck, but.
Do full-size garbage trucks pull in there? Does anybody know the answer to that? Yep.
Okay.
Should be good.
They're pretty tall, yeah.
Yeah, I know, I know an engine's pretty tall-profile as well, so.
Yeah, fire engine, yeah.
Yep. Any other questions for Mike? Um, let's start with John.
You've already purchased the property, right?
Correct.
Let's start with Teresa.
I've heard a lot of, of talk of it would be appropriate for one house and not two. Would that interest you at all as a developer?
I have entertained the idea, but, um, we feel like having two single-family homes provides more opportunity for families to reside in the, in the neighborhood.
I, I understand that that's where you're going, but in the event that, that plan is not, you don't, we're not allowed to go forward, would you be.
Yes.
Interested in developing one family?
Yes, that is, that is the backup plan. If we don't have the opportunity to the subdivision, yes, I do plan to do a single-family home.
And it would be a single-family, not a duplex?
No, it would be a single-family, larger-sized home.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Adams, this is John Sutter.
John, thank you.
I am sorry I couldn't be there, but I, I think we should clarify the whole single-family versus duplex question.
I'm not sure there's a question about duplex. Is there anybody? Go, go ahead. Let's see what you're talking about.
I guess maybe the statement that was just made. Appreciate Mike's intent to build only a single-family home there, but I think the council needs to be aware that, under our ordinance, a duplex is permitted by right in this location because the lot is so large. And what that means is that a duplex could be built on the site without any planning commission or city council review. It would just be a matter of getting a building permit. So I don't want anyone to think that the two choices here are subdivision for two houses or leave the lot as it is and one single-family home.
Correct.
The ordinance would allow a two-family dwelling to be built on this site without any public review, planning commission review, or city council approval needed. So I just want to make sure we all know that.
I didn't know that, John. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any other questions? John, you had one?
Teresa jumped the gun. I mean, she got it.
Okay, good. You know, I, I'd like to say something. If you don't mind hanging there.
I don't mind.
I'm guessing there's gonna be probably more questions for you, but I'd like to talk about us. You know, we are not owners, and I want us to remember that we are not owners. The neighbors aren't owners. There are certain rights that come with, with owning a property. We, as a council, at the end of the day, said 50 feet is what we wanted to allow in Crystal. And the reason we did that was, was very clear. We were getting pressure from the Met Council to do high, high-density housing. It was, it was the intent of this council to prevent entire blocks from being torn down and then traded with four, five, six-story high-density housing. So we wanted something that would make sure that the neighborhoods, for the most part, maintained exactly a neighborhood feel. So I, I know there's been some conversation in comments. There's been some conversations in letters. These are the things that I think about, and in terms of what we have for ordinances in place, I think it's important to remember that. Any other questions? Olga?
Uh, no question. Oh, do you have a question?
No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. I just wanted to kinda summarize my reasoning, and I don't know if it's time for that, or if we're.
I don't know. Questions for Mike? Let's, let Mike sit down if he's, he'll be in the room. We can call him back if we need to, right?
Yep.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, guys.
Why don't we move on to the discussion part with the council, then? Did you want to go?
I think, I think Olga and I were feeling the same thing.
Olga?
So I will defer.
Olga, go ahead.
Okay, well, I better go before, uh, things really fall apart in my brain, because they're already starting to get there. So I, I visited with the residents and walked around the property, and I've seen the, the drop-off and had, saw the concerns. And, and so this is, this is definitely a challenging thing to think through. The, what I'm, the gut feeling I'm getting, and, and what I'm getting after hearing all the input, after everything's been downloaded, is most of the issues presented here would exist even with one home or a home that was facing the street. So I think the issues are not going to be resolved whichever way the home is facing. There was already a home there at one time, so presumably there were, you know, deliveries and garbage trucks and emergency vehicles getting through. So if, if there is one home built on that property, the issues are still there. It could be one very large home, and it could be a duplex, which is basically two dwelling places combined. So that's what it is. So my. So, my concern is that most of these issues are not going to be resolved with flipping the home around or having even just one home. I do have some concerns that are still, you know, I am concerned about the size of the lot, of course. If it's four bedrooms, there are kids, there's no room for the kids to play. But some kids just play differently, so they might not need a whole lot of room. If it's adults and you have too many cars, then you can have the same issue with a duplex or one very large house. Water mitigation, you know, I would like to see a plan possibly ahead of time for, just to make sure everything's mitigated. But again, this is going to be an issue with one house or one duplex. So, the subdivision of the lot with the 46, 49.6, it is an ambiguous surveying. So, I don't know if we can have that resolved with a nail that's been driven into the post. I think that is an ambiguous issue. So, right now, that's actually the biggest concern for me. The owner has basically ticked off all the legal requirements by the city. And, you know, hearing all these concerns, I've given them serious consideration and weighed them with what has been presented by our staff. And so, that's just, that's the balancing act that has to happen. And I don't know if the surveying question can be answered at this point.
I think Mike has a comment on the surveying. Could you step forward, and so people at home can hear?
All right. Regarding the surveying question, last week at the planning commission hearing, one of the planning commission members was the actual surveyor. And I think he enlightened all of us on how, over the years, Dan, could you correct me if I'm wrong, obviously, I don't know the correct wording for it, but he said when the plant was originally planted in 19...
Twenty.
Twenty-something, it was 50 feet. And over the years, throughout the surveying process, it changed inch here, inch there. So, when it was planted at 50 originally, that's what it was planted as. And that's not going to change. And the Hittman County records, they have it planted as 50 feet wide, and that's the actual original plating of the lot.
So, Dan, we didn't measure to a nail on a pole. Please tell me what we did. No, I'm talking about us, the city.
No, no, we do not survey, no. I think it's important just to remember kind of what he was saying, that the lot was planted at 100 feet.
Right.
And you don't lose that, so to speak. I think the trouble happened, in my opinion, from when I've talked, in my conversation with the surveyor, in 1963. That's when the lots to the west were replatted from the original Gardendale Acres subdivision. Those two lots were replatted, and there was some sort of overlap between those two, between this lot and those lots. And that's where I think we lost a couple of inches, so to speak. Lost, and I use that kind of term loosely, because you only lose it because this lot didn't do anything to lose it. It was sort of the fault of the surveyors. It was kind of a surveying error, now I would call it. It's, the surveyor said that there's, you know, these methods are, these surveying methods transform over time. What was done in the 20s, the 60s, 2021, it's different how they do it, so.
All right. I'm just, I'm glad we didn't measure it to the nail.
But we do allow this rounding up, and I think that really is the answer.
Yeah, I got that. Yeah, why don't you have a seat? Quick comment, you got, you got to be at the mic. People at home got to hear you.
UDC does not refer to a 100-year-old plat, it refers to a lot width, which is a measurement as obtained by the surveyor. So, a plat is not a lot, so there's a distinct difference. And then, secondly, again, rounding is not, that is not the application of the UDC. Rounding doesn't apply to a measurement. A measure is pull-a-tape, it is what it is.
Right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know what, I'm not going to recycle, okay, we're going to be here all night if we keep recycling. You got a real quick comment? This is going to be the last one, please.
Absolutely. Again, Terry Berish. I live at the bottom of the hill, too, and the, we've spent thousands of dollars trying to mitigate water that's coming down from the hills. So, just in that area, it's all clay, it's solid clay, and it's incredibly non-porous. So, literally, we have spent many, many thousands of dollars to mitigate water from going into our basement. And this is the first year now since we put in the rain garden, although we haven't had water in our basement. But it was a very expensive thing.
Yeah. You know, I'm just going to tell you what's going on in my brain about the water. I'm half-thinking that you put a couple roofs, and you have some downspouts, you know, gutters with downspouts, this might improve it, because it's, you know, you're talking about the higher area is where the alley is. And if you can take all that water that could be draining both directions and send it this way, you're probably going to improve it. I don't know that to be true, but I know that from what's been proposed and what the construction will be touching, that topography isn't changing, and there's nothing new being added in that upper area. So, just, you know, in my head, you know, I think about, when I'm doing construction, I'm thinking about what water is doing all the time. And you got to think like a water droplet. And water droplets, they're going to come off a roof, and they're going to be captured and sent back to the creek, which will help the people downhill. So, I don't know. I'm inclined to think that that's going to help in the long run. That's just me thinking. Go ahead, Brendan.
My comment time? All right.
Yeah.
I've got quite a few notes here. And I think being the council member for Ward 2, which is where this property sits, I think ultimately, when we look at this, and I think, and I'm just kind of saying where, you know, I stand, right? It, while we have the rules and everything, right, that's the job for the city, that, you know, that the staff, they take and run with, but we're still the legislative body, right? And it's kind of where we come in, where that's, you know, the process is having the common sense aspect. And there's something that just still doesn't ring true to this, right? When I first looked at it, it just kind of made me want to scratch my head. And I'm not a developer, so I don't care, right? I'm not opposed to development, right? But when we're sitting here looking at things, do we do development for the sake of development? As someone has already previously stated. Just like earlier, was it, was that last year? When we had the issue with the development on Douglas. As far as it, you know, that our conversations revolved around, did it fit the community? Did it fit the neighborhood? Did it fit what was going on there? Not that we're opposed to any development taking place, right? But does it fit with what we're actually doing? And to be put, you know, to put a house facing in an alley, it just doesn't make sense. I mean, it just, it doesn't, right? You know, does it really truly fit when you look at the, what is it, six houses that kind of revolve around that spot? And when you, you know, when we start talking, we're looking at altering the development, you know, altering the neighborhood. That, you know, and then ultimately, I represent the citizens of Ward 2. And I haven't heard anybody in favor of it. And so, whether or not, at the end of the day, kind of as I've done before, you know, sometimes it's not about what my personal opinion may or may not be, but it's my job to represent the citizens of Ward 2, you know, Crystal as a whole, but specifically, that's who votes for me. And it's my job to, you know, go with what they want. So, I'm not in favor of this.
Okay. I'm the mayor of Ward 2? Which ward was that? Just 2, huh? You know, I'd like to speak to a couple of those points, because I think, I think it's important, maybe even using the same arguments, I fall in a different place. If we're a legislative branch, and we put out what our requirements are based on all of our professional services that we have from staff, and we have somebody who comes in, whether they owned it ahead of time or they came in and just bought into the city with a set of ground rules based on that legislation. And then, they propose and follow the rules to the best of their ability and have this proposal, which the city professionals at this point are saying, every box has been checked. And I understand having an opinion, but having that opinion overstep what's been established in our legislation is a challenge for me. In this conversation, it's been convenient to talk about what the homeowner should or shouldn't do, what the dangers are to the homeowner and the homeowner's kids, and all of these things that at the end of the day, it's the homeowner's responsibility to handle a lot of these things. And that's, I know I'm jumping topics, if you're trying to follow linear, I'm kind of jumping around, I'm sorry. But what we do control does fall into the legislative area. And really, there's not a lot of discretion in there in terms. We pick the uniqueness of the lot to argue against or for it. And it falls in almost which way we face the lot. All those things. At the end of the day, I want to bring it back to the ownership. That person has an expectation to present something that fits the ordinances. And when a governing agency comes in and says, yeah, you got all the boxes checked, but, you know, we're just not going to do it. I'm not there. Go ahead.
Well, kind of going back through, right, and reading the section, and I think, you know, it points out, you're talking about the color of the law, right? That's something that I used to be very well-versed in. But when you start talking about shall, and that's also, as far as what was in there, my interpretation of that, and I kind of think that's where it's up-left for interpretation and what Dan, you know, presented. But shall means shall not, didn't say for, it didn't explicitly say for a new alley. It says it shall not face an alley. So, if we're building something and it's facing the alley, I mean, is it in there, am I missing something? Is there in there somewhere where it says that, you know, for a new construction, it can't, you know, it can? But I think that's a hang-up for me. You know, shall is very big. When I used to be a cop, right, there was, you know, there were things when you said you shall do something, right? Like, there is no, it takes my discretion away, right? And so, when it says no house shall face an alley, that I don't think we have a discretionary, I don't think that box has been checked. Unless there was, you know, an issue in the wording, right? But when you just read that section in the UDC, I don't, unless I'm missing something else. And that's where I would like some clarity.
Well, I mean, the staff reports talked about that in reference to establishing it. I mean, that's the only, that's the only separation, I think.
I'm saying, how does that, but this still doesn't overcome the shall.
If it's pertaining to establishment only, yes, it is.
We're building a house, and you understand what I'm saying? Like, when you talk about the color of the law, and you talk about what was the intent of, what was the intent of this? What is the purpose of that, right? I think that's almost the, when you talk about color of the law, that's almost the common sense aspect of it, right? When you're looking at how we word something, and what was the purpose and the intent, you know, behind that, right? And so, it's almost right in that same aspect. Why do you put the terminology shall in there, in that sentence? Why did we do that when we developed the UDC? And then to turn around and say, well, it just doesn't really, you know, it's okay for this.
Well, I don't think it's that direct. I think there's, what Dan presented was something specific relating to the establishment of an alley. And you can use the same logic to argue the color or the intent of the law, but yet we've got unique characteristics on here. So, if I were to have, apply my feelings, my thoughts to it, I would say, don't face that thing towards 36. That would be ridiculous. And that, I don't know.
I'm just saying, when you were talking about checking the boxes, I guess it still says, you know, alleys may be established by the city, okay? This has been established. Clearly, this is an alley that's established. Alleys shall be made of concrete. It's made of concrete. No home shall be oriented to face the alley. I really don't see, there's no leeway in there. Where's the wiggle room? It says alleys, alleys may be established. This is an established alley. I mean, please tell me if I'm missing something when I read it, right? I mean, I go back to the same thing. When I was a police officer, if you witness something of a certain offense, you shall make an arrest. I couldn't say, you know what, when I was, I did DWIs for many, it didn't matter if they were a cop. If I pulled them over and they failed the test, I had to make an arrest. I shall, not, I mean, that's just period. This is really, really what it is, right? That's really what I can't get over. It doesn't say, you know, they may be established, okay, yes, we already know that. It's established. It's an established alleyway that says it shall, no home shall be oriented to face the alley.
I think, if I can interrupt.
Sure.
I think the context is critical to this. I think what the code is saying is you can't establish a new alley if you're going to put houses facing it. It does not address, oh, I'm not an attorney, Mary, so you interrupt.
I'm, I'm going to interrupt.
Yeah, I was kind of looking, I was kind of looking.
I'm going to interrupt pretty soon.
But I think you can't, you couldn't put in an alley today and say, oh, yeah, six of those houses are going to face the alley. But it doesn't apply to an alley that was planted almost 100 years ago. I think that, I think taking it out of context isn't fair or right or appropriate.
Go ahead, Olga.
And I was really, this was a big point for me as well, the alley, the alley point, which way the house is facing. That's why I asked, which way did the original house, or one of the houses that was there face? The concerns presented by the neighbors, by the neighborhood, are way beyond which way the house is facing. There's water mitigation, there's the size of the lot, there's traffic, there's a number of cars, there's where the kids will play, the drop-off back there. So, the alley, maybe the developer can flip the houses around. Is this going to solve everything? I don't think so. So, you could, I mean, you could get rid of the trees, there's the creek, the houses will face 36, and that's the front of the house. And then they'll just pull up through the back. We have a house like that, I'm on an alley as well, in an adjacent alley where a house is facing the street, but it's just cosmetics. It's really that the access exclusively through the back of the alley. You can park in the street, but all the deliveries, no, the deliveries are done through the front. So, it's different, but if you have these houses flipped, the same concerns are there. And the concerns are so big that, to me, it feels like nothing can be built on that property, because it's just inaccessible. So, or it has to be very tightly controlled, which is ultimately not fair, because like the mayor said, the developer is taking off all the boxes and is meeting our legal requirements that we have set forward as in our code. So, it's either all or nothing, and I don't think that's realistic. So, flipping the houses to face 36 wouldn't solve any of these concerns. And I just can't, it can be read either way, and I think our attorney might possibly have input on that. So, I don't know, mayor, if you want to. So I don't know, Mayor, if you want to entertain that.
I, I think that's just a, just a different way of saying something. I tend to agree. Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I'll, I'll be brief, because I know nobody likes to hear from the attorney, but, but actually, I think, I think, and there's just a couple of brief comments I have. One is just to clarify the legal standard under which you're considering this application. Councilmember Banks is correct, your legislative body, you acted in a legislative capacity when you adopted the standards. You're now acting in what's in legal lingo. You're acting in a quasi judicial capacity when you're considering this application, which means you have less discretion, okay? And so you have to look at the criteria in your ordinance and decide whether the application meets it or not. Now, the, some of the criteria maybe arguably has some, some subjectivity written into it. But you need to be able to articulate how it doesn't meet the criteria because you're acting in that quasi judicial capacity, not in a legislative capacity. I'll give you my opinion on the alley language. I think it's very clear, if I'm a judge reading that, in my opinion, I think it, it clearly applies to the creation of new alleys because it says alleys may be established in the future under the following conditions. That's my, that's my interpretation of that language. Take it for what it's worth, but that's how I interpret it.
I always appreciate, she brought in all the other language, that's why I'm, I wasn't, I was.
Thank you, Mary. John, go ahead.
Are we ready to make a motion on the first point to 7.25, the resolution vacating an easement within the plat of Glendale Acres? Are we there yet?
I don't know. Let's find out. Are there any other questions from the council?
A lot of the comments that have been made are things that I was going to say.
Okay. All right. So we won't waste anyone's time. Why don't you go ahead with that one?
Make a motion approving the resolution vacating an easement within the plat of Glendale Acres.
All right, for a second, Nancy?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Adams.
Aye.
Councilmember Banks.
Nay.
Councilmember Budishevsky.
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings.
Nay.
Councilmember Kaiser.
Nay.
Councilmember LaRoche.
Nay.
Councilmember Persons.
Aye.
Motion fails.
That's sad, right?
I, that's the easement.
Yep, that's easement.
So we have, we have seven, three.
I can jump on that one too.
I imagine it's not going to be any.
Yes, it's going to not come to any difference though, yeah.
We'll see. Go ahead.
I make a motion of approving the resolution approving Crystal Flats preliminary and final plat. Anybody want to second that? Anybody?
We'll second.
Nancy, thank you. I'm just going to make a real quick comment, and if, if somebody else wants to make a comment after, I'll open it to them too. You, you do realize this opens things up to different building.
Yes.
Okay.
I know that, yeah.
It's just, you know, the tenor of the conversation, not wanting something, now something is opened up that they didn't want.
Well, I think it was very clear with the first one, gave the city control over the watershed, which is what, you know, ultimately they wanted, was control over the watershed, and that failed. So now it's kind of like, it is what it is now, right? I mean.
Well, the current easement still is in place.
Yeah, but not, not to.
It's just not done to a higher standard, like what, what it could have been. All right, so, any other comments on this?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor. I'm just sort of anticipating here what may happen. One option would be to, depending on the consensus of the council, to have staff bring back a different resolution with appropriate findings, supporting if, if this goes the way I think it's going to go. My concern would be articulating specific reasons and basis for why the council believes that it does not meet the criteria, the subdivision criteria. And that would be important to do to support a decision of denial here. So you could vote on it tonight, or you could direct staff to bring back a resolution with articulating findings consistent with council discussion here tonight to, to support a possible denial.
So.
And I don't, and maybe Mr. Olson has further comments on that, but that would be my.
So, so Mary, let me just try to put it in the words that work in my brain. In order to keep us out of trouble, we need to do that.
I believe if this is going down the path of denial, in order for it to be legally more defensible, that it would be a good idea to have a resolution spelling out the specific reasons why the council does not believe it meets the subdivision criteria in your ordinance, yes.
All right. I'll continue this, this topic until the next meeting, instructing staff to find the legal findings for a negative decision on this motion.
I think you need to, can you include negative or positive, like explanations?
Negative or positive? Yeah, negative or positive.
More findings, maybe just more findings?
And I think it, it could be helpful for staff, and again, I'll let Mr. Olson elaborate if he wants to, but to maybe summarize what the members who are opposed, to summarize what those specific reasons. I mean, we've all heard the discussion here, so I think we all get a flavor for it. But that could be helpful for staff in putting together another resolution, to sort of summarize.
I think I'll allow that conversation. Based on the vote of the prior resolution. Let's start over here. Where was the first nay?
For me, I just was not clear on who is in charge of what. I have issues, and even though it's not legally required for the Bassett Creek watershed to be involved because of the size of the lot, however, I would like to see if other entities may be of interest to get input into this, such as the DNR. And that's kind of where I was at. I just had issues, even though this was a small lot, this easement was not brought in with other opinions from watershed or DNR. I'd just like more information about how this easement could improve or impact the creek and watershed. Does that make sense?
Does that make sense to you? I, I'd like to make a quick comment before you respond to that. Hold on. On, you know, just the thresholds that we have for the watershed are established for, so that things don't end up getting petty in terms of, of what business is before them. And it, it's not arbitrary, and I would like to know what that standard is for the DNR as. DNR, yeah, as well, and, you know.
Just clarification.
If, if, if it's got an established standard, I'd like to respect that.
Yep.
Dan, do you have any comments on that?
Well, I can certainly look into see if there might be other entities that might want to look at this. Just my reaction to the DNR is that they would not look at this because they would only look at where a public, it's defined as a public water. That's, that's what they would look at, and this twin lake, I think, is a public water, but.
All right. Well, let's bring those findings back.
Yep.
All right.
That, that would be.
Thank you, Nancy.
You bet.
The next no over here.
Oh, I just wanted to clarify, is this about the upcoming vote or the one that we just took? Because the, the.
The upcoming vote.
The upcoming vote is not the one about the easement, it's about the plat, the subdivision, right? So is this what you're looking for?
We could always.
Rather than having.
Right. We could redress easement at a later time.
So I don't think this is about the easement.
Okay.
As much as it is about why this plat should not be divided.
Correct.
Yep. Go ahead, Teresa.
Thank you. I was the next no. My issue with it is the wall. And during Water Commission was not requested to weigh in on this. I was over at the property on Sunday, and it's, it's really deep. But we're also in a drought. So when, you know, I'm thinking back to the conversation several months ago when Mark Ray presented that with the flood plan and of all the properties that are around Falki Pond, for example, or Hegemeister, water's an issue. And to me, that's not addressed well enough that I could vote for the easement because of the, the creek that's going through there. That, that's why I voted no.
So that's addressing the easement?
Yeah, it's not the easement. We're talking about reasons for the plat, for the subdivision.
Oh, I.
I thought we were talking easement.
No.
I thought we were talking easement too.
So. I, I, we're using the votes, the no votes.
Yeah, if you were going to vote no for the subdivision of the plat.
Before we take the.
Oh, and that's.
I'm not taking the vote.
But the subdivision wouldn't go forward without the easement about, with the creek, correct?
I would argue vice versa.
Right. It's the other way around.
It's the other way around.
Yeah.
It's the other way around.
You voted the easement down. What I'm asking for is a re, give a summary of the reasons that you want, may want to deny the subdivision because I think that's where it's going.
I vote a no.
Yes, because, because we're not going to vote on it.
And so staff would, right, staff would need to come back with a new resolution that states the reasons for denial so that we are able to articulate it and have a, have a good basis, hopefully.
Do you want our reasons for voting no before we actually vote no?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. And directing staff to then bring back those reasons so that there's a good record, a good record.
But we're not voting no.
I know, because you're saying for a legal, good, legal standpoint, staff needs to be able to answer those questions.
Well, if then, if, then I will readdress my, that topic. Because I apologize, I thought this was regarding the easement. I would like to see clarification for parking on the street because right now Hampshire has one side of the street parking only, which is being used by other neighbors. I want to see how that impacts, you know, the impact of additional parking on the street in certain occasions. The impact of the water drainage because Lorinda's home, who's right at the lower level of this development, and I walked that lot too, I also visited with neighbors, and it, it's pretty flat until you get towards the back of the fence, and then you see a drop off. And I could see issues of drainage going in there. Maybe the gutter thing solves it. But I do see issues with drainage to the property. The power line, I think, the underground utilities was another item. If that is done and doesn't affect the power pole in Al's Yard, which is a very, I think, critical to safety in that area because it is a sharp drop off. I would like to see if that has affected at all. And there was one other thing now, and it just went right out of my head. I apologize.
We can come back to.
Yeah, thank you. I'll, I'll revisit my notes here.
For me, parking is an issue because it's already, there are four houses there sharing a narrow alley. And when the people have relatives over or friends over or parties, the parking on Hampshire is, is only allowed on one side of the street, so it's already cut in half. That's an issue. I, I think that there are so many people here that are opposed to it, and not that we need to, that is not our job to keep the neighborhood happy, but we need to consider the, the thought process of the people around there. It's, it's going to affect their lives every day going in and out of the alley. And the alley, really, it was only one car at a time. So you put two houses there with potentially, what, six more cars, figure three out. You have mom, dad have a car and a teenage kid, or they have renters, or it, it's just too congested. And it's, it's, it would be different if it was a street. It's not a street. And that's why I would vote no.
Go ahead.
I think from, right, yeah, there's, there's all the other subjective things. I think that still, I would say, again, my, my interpretation and my struggle, so the, even, and, and it, and it, no, it doesn't solve the problem. This is a very, again, we talked about it being a unique property and, and kind of the access. It's a, this is a very difficult accessible property. And so, you know, the, where I would ultimately, so, you know, fall down on there is, right, do we have any, we, I need some clarification on the houses facing alleys. That just doesn't, nothing makes sense about that to me. And I know it doesn't solve the problem when you flip the house around, right? But that is still, when we come down to a, like a technicality piece of that, do we have any examples of, of houses facing alleys? Do we have, you know, any, any of those things, right? When we go through and we're talking about checking off the boxes and doing that, and we're talking about the development of the city and, you know, and kind of the process and, and all of those different things, I, that's just still, that's still, that's my hangup, you know, ultimately, right? Yes, I have the, the other things, and we talk about like those feel-good pieces, right? But that, for me, I, I need that question answered.
Okay. I'm not a no, so I'm going to withhold, I'll leave it to staff.
Couple of points, so I'd be a no, I'm a no. Just the alleyway parts, when I think of like alleyways, right, they have, it's a great way to get, you know, some of the services and kind of get in behind your house, you don't have to see it and all that. But what's nice is you'll have like on-street parking, you can always, you know, it's readily accessible. And it seems like almost all alleyways are not a dead end, so that makes it tougher here. And I would like a little more comparison with dead-end alleyways in Crystal and how those work. And maybe the, those dead-end alleys actually have like easier to get to, like in front of their house on-street parking. And then just maybe a little more clarification on the rounding part, you know, kind of what, you could get into the minutia of, you know, what are you going to round and where? So just the alleyways and kind of the rounding part, that's kind of what I'm, need a little more clarification on.
Okay, that totals the no's, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that item is continued. We're going to move on with our regular agenda.
Could I ask a clarification question?
Sure.
Do, I understand you want a resolution that would have findings for denial?
Or approval, or.
Findings, yeah.
You want, you also want it for approval as well, based on some of this research that I'd be doing?
Yes.
Is that what I'm hearing?
Approval as well, yep.
Because, Mayor, it did sound to me like there were some questions. There's also some reasons for possible denial, but then there was also, what I was hearing was possible clarification of some issues. So I think it would make sense to have both resolutions. And if some of the concerns are then addressed with staff, then you can consider it at the next meeting.
Yep. It can't be one way. All right. With that, we are going, we have two more items. Okay, I'll try to re. So that motion is now dead because I continued the topic to the next council meeting. So there, we're, we're sending staff back to do some more work, some more findings. And they're going to come back at our next meeting, and we're going to rehash this specific stuff the no votes wanted further information on.
And we have not actually voted, so there wasn't any no votes.
We have not voted.
So we're seeking more clarifications on these issues.
You know, Robert's rule says, you know, once you get, got a second, you got to make a vote unless it's continued. Continuation is a different, different thing.
Also, I just remembered the other clarification, that signage on 36 telling people, I have a house on, you know, the alley. That seems a little odd to me.
I, I think it's odd too, and quite honestly, you know, if I want Domino's pizza delivered, I'm going to be darned clear with them that there's zero access from 36. I want to get my pizza.
Yeah, so if we could get clarification on that too.
It's another thing that I think it's almost overstepping for us to even have that condition on there because that's up to the homeowner or the occupant. And if, if they're not smart enough to give them good enough directions.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, but if you have, and I would tell you from a standpoint of emergency services.
Yeah.
As a cop, if the address tells me it's here, I'm going here. And if it's, we're talking about a life or death situation, and I, and my only access is the alley? And it doesn't, and it doesn't, you know, my, the GPS isn't going to take me that.
I think from a cop or even a fire perspective, when they do their training on locations and stuff, that's going to be one of the places they say, fine, this.
No, no.
Absolutely. Those are the same. Those are the same.
Not always.
You do in fire.
No, not always, when you're sitting here talking about.
I understand, it's, the, the training isn't consistent year after year after year. At that point, I would agree.
No, I, I, I'm, I'm telling you, when you're, when you're getting an emergency call, when you're getting an emergency call of, of shots fired, you're getting there, you're thinking about, this is where the G, where, this is where it's taking me. You're not thinking about training or anything, you're saying, this is where it's taking me, and I pull up to the outside of that house, I'm not pulling up to the outside of that house, I'm gonna be on the other side of that creek, and I'm needing to get my butt in there, and I gotta run across that, I gotta run across that creek, whatever status it is, because that's where my car is, and I need seconds, right? We're not talking, this is, that's a total different, that's a total different thing, when my only access, the quickest access would have been to come through the alley. You don't do training on that that says, oh, well, the one house in the whole city that you need to access is gonna come on this alley.
Right, it's not one, one house, there's multiple houses.
That, that's your, that's your only access?
No, no, there, there are many houses.
I'm just saying that, that was invalid.
I've, I've had, I've had training as a firefighter in these hard-to-find addresses, these situations. That's all I'm saying. I'll just leave it right there, because that's happened.
I just want, can I say something? This is a completely moot point, because our owner and developer of this lot is going to go and build himself a duplex without anybody's input, and anyone's control, and so people are still gonna be delivering pizzas and answering emergencies calls, emergency calls to this property.
That's something that we may need to address in the code when we find an issue.
Well, by the time we address this in the code, this duplex will be built, or a single-family home will be built, and this whole thing is completely out of our control, and we have no say over water drainage, we have no say over, so this is like, not a helpful thing for the neighborhood ultimately, so arguing about these things is not really.
So how do we get to the ultimate?
Well, we, we.
We just say, oh, well, it doesn't matter.
Maintain control, so.
What we're going to do is continue the process.
Yes.
My point was to try to clarify for the audience, are the, is it unclear at this point as to where we're going and how we're going? It is unclear?
They don't know what's going on. I don't know what's going on.
Correct. Next meeting is September ninth.
All right. You're welcome to stay if you wanna hear about Hanson Court. You're, it's okay for you guys to leave, since we're done with this topic, it's not impolite, so you're welcome to if you'd like. I'm sure you didn't want to spend this much time here tonight, but here we are. Item seven-four, the council considers, considered a resolution approving the lot consolidation for plat five-two-three-two to five-two-four-zero at Hanson Court. Dan?
Yes, I think this item is a little less complex, maybe. This is a lot consolidation, these are two platted lots on Hanson Court. Here, of course, is the Hanson Court, here is Highway eighty, about a boulevard, and then this is West Broadway, just for context. Tonight, you're being asked to approve a lot consolidation, the plat is called E Erickson Lot Consolidation. The property owner is Eric Erickson, good Minnesota name there. He would like to construct a parking lot that would meet the, the property line setbacks. So he, right now, there was, the, the key issue here is there's a property line that goes right through the two of them, so he wants to build a prop, a parking lot that would be over the property lines, and he can't do that without consolidating, so that's really the purpose of the, of the consolidation. Lot dimensions, the fifty-two-thirty-two is a little over fifteen thousand square feet, the fifty-two-forty is a little over seventeen thousand square feet, the combined lot would be approximately thirty-two thousand square feet. There is no park dedication fee for a lot consolidation. Here is the, the combined lot, showing it'd be lot one, block one of this addition, so. And there's easements, new easements are being dedicated, ten-foot on the front and rear, five on the sides, which we did not have before. These are the criteria for lot consolidation approval. First, that it must be in conformance to the comprehensive plan, these properties are guided as mixed use, and they are zoned in industrial. The existing water and sewer business that the applicant owns would conform to this land use designation. Secondly, the consolidation meets the purpose and intent of the UDC. The purpose of the UDC is to create regulations to avoid or minimize negative impacts with adjacent properties. This existing use does, is compatible with other uses on Hanson Court. And then finally, the consolidation should create lots in conformance to the dimensional requirements of the UDC. Currently, these lots do not meet the lot area and lot width requirement in the industrial district, but when they are consolidated into one, they will. So it's conforming, it would be conforming. So staff recommends, recommends approval of the lot consolidation through the resolution that you have at the dais.
All right, thank you, Dan.
I'm available for questions, I don't think the applicant is online, I don't see them, but.
Any questions for City Planner Dan?
Oh.
Seeing none here. Nope, nobody online.
Nope.
Looking for a motion. Brendan.
Make a motion approving the East Erickson Lot Consolidation Final Plat. All right, nope, that's the wrong one.
Yep.
That was? Okay, all right.
All right, Nancy. Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right.
Thank you.
Item five, council.
That's right.
Will consider the approval of the West Metro Fire Rescue District budget.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, did I hear a nay? Or did I hear just somebody say something else different? Sorry. Pardon me, I'm sorry, I thought I heard a nay. I heard something else.
We need a roll call.
Oh, so did I.
Let's do a roll call, just to clarify.
Councilmember Banks?
Aye.
Councilmember Budishevsky?
Aye.
Councilmember Cummings?
Aye.
Councilmember Kaiser?
Aye.
Councilmember LaRoche?
Aye.
Councilmember Parsons?
Aye.
Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kristine, are you hearing things? Retired.
What? How could you be?
Like, voting crazy things.
All right, Anne, you're, you got West Metro.
Thank you. All right, as you know, we're part of the West Metro Fire District, a joint powers agreement between Crystal and New Hope to provide fire services to both cities, and the JPA requires that the budget be approved by the board no later than the end of July of each year, and each city council has to approve it by the end of August. So the budget is in front of you, the board approved it at its July meeting, the impact to Crystal is, I believe it's three percent, three-point-two percent, forty-two thousand dollars. It's here in front of you. Chief Larson is here, if you have questions. Board member Banks is here, too.
All right, thank you, Anne. Questions for Anne? Or, I'm a Banks? Or chief, seeing none? Looking for a motion? John, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the West Metro Fire District twenty-two budget.
Brendan.
Second that.
Thank you. All members in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay.
Good job.